This meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Wednesday, November 5th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we get going on the agenda items, I'd just like to say on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, our appreciation for the poll workers, police officers, and town staff who made yesterday's election go so successfully. And despite the loss of Elbow Rome, I'm glad to have what is probably the first full Board of Selectmen in the last two years. And I welcome Chris Da Silva and Tim Egan to the board. And I offer, Chris, and then Tim, an opportunity to say something to the audience and their new 10,000 constituents.
Thank you. Thanks for the welcome. And thank you to the people who thought enough of me to vote for me, and I hope I serve your purposes adequately.
Very good. Tim?
I'm very thankful for the opportunity to be here and to serve the town here for the remainder of the term. And let's get started.
All right. Good attitude. All right. So I ask your indulgence because I'm going to play a little Board of Selectmen 101 throughout most of this meeting, just to introduce the process to the new members. And our first agenda item is public comments. And this is a permanent agenda item at the beginning of every meeting, gives anybody in town an opportunity to come to speak before the board about anything they want. Could be some new thing that's happening in town, it could be some great idea they have, it could be some complaint they have. It is not really a forum for discussion because we rarely have information on hand to make knowledgeable discussion points. What it often works out to be is, you know, we'll later figure out follow-up work, you know, maybe it's as simple as Kevin just getting information to the person later, maybe it's something, a policy that we want to investigate further. But for now, I'm going to open up public comment to the audience. Is there anybody who wants to speak? Mr. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, I would first like to congratulate our two new members of the board. I hope they will be an asset to the board, do things in an unbiased manner, and remember that they're representing the citizens of the town of Maynard. The other thing I would like to bring to your attention once again, Mr. Chairman, we have a developer in town who made development agreements with the town who he has not kept. He is now proceeding with another project, and I understand there has been no development agreement for that project. And the reason I bring this up is because we recently had a nice new blacktop road put on one of our gateway roads, Parker Street. Okay? And this is one of the areas that I'm speaking of, is I remember he was supposed to put in new sidewalk, new curbs, and so forth. And it's been, at least in my recollection, five years that he has not done this. I don't know what action the town has taken. There's a rumor around that supposedly the town is taking them to court. I don't see any action, and I don't see any reason why the town has not required a development agreement for Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comments? All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the acceptance of minutes. And we have three sets of minutes, which is usually more than we have, or want to have, but we're a little backlogged. And for the new members, I'm sure that you spent all last night reviewing your packet, so you reviewed all the minutes. Any observations you have on these minutes would be appreciated as a, as somebody who is not a participant, because one of the points of the minutes is to make it clear to other people what went on. But typically, and it's not a hard and fast rule, but typically when we vote on the approval of minutes, those who weren't there at the meeting, we abstain from voting. But you, of course, have the right to vote any way you want. So regarding the minutes of October 7th, anybody have any comments on those?
No, but I will make a motion to accept the minutes as presented in the packet.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes of October 2nd. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the accepting of the minutes of October 7th? All right, we got a unanimous vote on that. Okay, regarding the minutes of October 21st, Jason, you still working on those, or are those ready?
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt? We just had our two new members approve the minutes of the meeting that they didn't attend.
That's correct. Yeah, it's perfectly fine with me.
I don't know how you do that, but I guess you approve if I don't.
Hey, I'll take any unanimous vote I can get. Okay. Uh, sorry, Jason. The minutes of 21st, you still working on those, or?
Those have gone back to Becky.
Okay.
If you'd like to hold off on those.
That'll be fine.
Either that, or we can approve as amended.
Well, we don't know what the amendments are yet, so there's nothing to approve. So, all right, we'll move on to the minutes of the 27th, which was, oh, that was a town meeting. Anybody have any comments on those?
No, I will make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted in the packet for October 27, 2014.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the minutes of 27th? All right, unanimous again, 5-0. Thank you very much. Now, the third item is correspondence, and this is a list of correspondence that was received by the Office of the Board of Selectmen during the time since our last meeting. And for some reason that I can't fathom, we're required to accept them. We're not approving them, we're accepting them. So I will make a motion to accept correspondence items A through L as listed on the agenda for November 5. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. And at this point, theoretically, we could actually, if you had interest, discuss any of these, but it usually works out better if discussion of those items happens towards the end of the meeting as part of new old business. Otherwise, it can throw off our agenda schedule and mess up some appointment times. But if anything jumps out at you and you want to talk about it, feel free. Regardless, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting correspondence? Vote is 5-0. Thank you very much. Now, next up, Item Four on the agenda is some interviews and appointments. And we lead off with a interview for an opening on the Council on Aging. And this opening was unfortunately available through an untimely death, but we have a term that will expire in June 30, 2015, and Mr. Acker has expressed his interest, so we'll let the applicant introduce himself and introduce his interest to the position.
My name is Lee Acker. I moved here from Lexington, Kentucky last March, and I would like to, since I am a senior citizen, I'm very interested in the Commission of Aging, and would like to participate in the town that I live in. And congratulations to the two selectmen.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Kevin, do we have any information from the council or thoughts from staff about?
I do believe Mr. Acker met for some extended period with Andrew. I'm not sure if the council has anything, has weighed in or not.
The council hasn't formally met Mr. Acker, but I have. And I've spent a little over an hour with him over the past couple of weeks in conversations about his interest in serving on the board and the energy and the things that he hopes to do for the community. And I'm happy to recommend him to the board without reservation.
Very good. All right, I'll open it to questions from the board. Jason, you want to lead off?
How are you doing, Natalie?
I'm doing good. How about you?
Andrew mentioned you have some ideas. Could you, could you tell us some of those, or some interests and things you'd like to see?
Well, I'd like to see, I think the population of the elderly is growing, and I think it becomes more necessary to find things for them to do. I'm interested in exercising and something like Tai Chi, anything that will make the city better with having their senior citizens around. I'm very interested in things like therapy dogs, and having elderly use therapy dogs, and also have therapy dogs go into different situations where they can, hospitals and nursing homes and things like that.
Great. Thank you. David?
Yeah, a couple things. First off, Mr. Acker, thank you for your interest. Thank you for your service to our country. I noticed that on your resume. I also think it's interesting, you worked for WR Grace, and you probably are familiar with the fact that Acton was, had a huge plan. That's why when you said Lexington, I thought you were going to say Lexington, Mass, and then I hear Lexington, Kentucky. And so it's somewhat ironic, I guess, that you move in to the neighboring town to where they had a very large operation. Do you have any experience in volunteer work for a community? And if so, how has that tempered your thoughts about doing these types of things?
I worked in Tracy, California for, they have a lot of problems with graffiti, and I did extensive work with the police department to eradicate walls and buildings. We also, I also too worked with, I'm trying to think of the name of it, the, anyway, it was for people that had no place to live. And in Lexington, I did a lot of work in children's hospitals, I said, with a therapy dog and a service dog. And we did children's hospital, and we started, we actually started the program for the four hospitals in Lexington with service dogs, and worked extensively with the VA hospitals.
Thank you. I assume that you are aware that the Council on Aging has really, it's in a transitional stage.
Yes, I am, sir.
But on an upward.
Right, absolutely.
Trend, which is fabulous, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I figure a new, a new pair of eyes would be.
Yeah, and so I'm excited to have, you know, new interested people that are coming on board that understand that, you know, there is, there is some authority invested in the Council on Aging, and it is, you know, it's the responsibility of the council to take advantage of that authority.
Absolutely.
When the opportunity comes up, and I hope that that occurs. I assume you're also aware of the current plan to move, to hopefully get our Council on Aging center, per se, moved over to the golf course.
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts on that, and what, and how that might impact?
When I first heard about it, I, you know, I was there at the first meeting they had for the Council on Aging, and I thought it was a good idea, and I've subsequently watched it grow a little bit with the parking lot being changed. And I haven't seen it since they've done extensive work in the back, but hopefully tomorrow I will see that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, David, for reminding us that his resume and volunteer experience is listed on Page 58 and 59 of our packet. But, next question, Chris, do you have any questions?
Do not.
All right, Tim?
Nope.
I'm good to go, too. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Lee Acker to the Council on Aging for a term expiring June 30, 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Motion is unanimous. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, signatures from you guys, and then pass it over to Becky.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Becky, does this need to be in black?
Blue is fine.
Okay. Okay, next up, we have a interview and appointment for a new police officer. And just as a little background, the Board of Selectmen is actually the police commission in the town of Maynard. And as far as I know, all that means is we get to help in the hiring of police officers. We have the chief here to introduce, and please, go ahead.
Thanks. Welcome. If you don't mind, I can just give a quick summary for the two new members of how we got here. Actually, we don't have an opening right now. This is anticipated for January 1st. So we started this process really in May, when the town meeting, we were removed from civil service. So that was a whole nother, very cumbersome process that is now left up to us to create our own process for hiring and promotions versus using the state's civil service system. So back in May, we devised a plan of a hiring process anticipating an opening July, January 1st. I did a summary that was in your packet that you probably haven't had an opportunity to look at yet, since it was probably just not too long ago today, but the process solicited resumes through the law enforcement computer system that all law enforcement agencies have. Received, I think, 28 or 29 resumes. They were reviewed by all supervisors. We elected to interview a certain number. Ultimately, we chose to interview the academy-trained people that had applied. And the reason for that is it saves us roughly eight months of training time, substantial amount of overtime. And one of the biggest cost centers we have is overtime in the police department, so trying to get ahead of that, of an opening, anticipating opening, saves us quite a bit of money in the big picture for the annual budget. So, so getting ahead of that, we interviewed the academy-trained people, and we're very pleased with the candidate that you have before you tonight. He, his resume is included. He's been a police officer for roughly a year now. Comes to us from UMass Worcester Hospital, has full-time certified police officers on their campus, and he also works as an auxiliary in two other communities, the one he lives in and the adjoining one in Charlton. It was pretty competitive. We had a lot of very qualified applicants, pretty thorough background check, very positive every employer spoke very highly of him, were very pleased with the final selection. It was unanimous with the command staff that interviewed all the candidates, and very happy to have him here before you tonight, seeking the appointment. To start, December 1st. And the reason for that is field training, so he'll ride with somebody, learn the community, the police department procedures. He's already academy-trained, but they still go through about a roughly anywhere between six and eight weeks of field training, just to figure out our procedures and what we do unique here, and learn the community, and all the internal mechanisms that we have. So he'll do field training for roughly six weeks. And then the final piece of the puzzle for us is we do have somebody in the police academy also, who will graduate in the middle of January. So when this officer gets off field training and gets on the road, we'll have one more officer that's back field training, and then we'll be a full complement of people, and hopefully not any openings for quite some time. So Tom Pomarino is the candidate that I'm requesting the appointment for.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll take the hot seats, and why don't you introduce yourself? And we do have your resume and some, some background information, but feel free to add whatever you wish.
Okay. My name is Thomas Pomarino, from Southbridge, Mass, born and raised. Graduated high school in 2006. Didn't go to college, but I plan on going back roughly next year for the springtime, and finish my degree in Associates in Criminal Justice.
Very good. All right, so I think I'll open it up to the board members for questions. I'll start again with Jason. Got any questions?
Can you, can you give us a little background about your interest in Maynard specifically, or in what you're looking to do here?
I'm looking to expand my, my career and find a place that I can call home and stay. I actually, one of my classmates works here, Nick Latino, and when I was going through the academy, I was a self-sponsor, so I didn't have a job, a police job, when I graduated. And about three months ago, Nick told me there was an opening in Maynard, and we've been talking for about two years now, and he just mentioned, when he got on the job in January, that he just loved working here and everything about it, and it was, just enjoyed coming to work every day, and he liked the group of guys that he worked with, loves the department, and it's something I can see myself. You know, I think I'm a good fit for the department, and I get along with all the guys in the town.
Okay.
David, go ahead.
Welcome. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about your experience at UMass and as a police officer there, and what types of things you have learned along the way, even in the short time that you've, that you've been there, that you think you might be able to bring with you to our community?
Yes, sir. At UMass, on Lake Gav, the hospital, it's the University of Massachusetts, the campus. Basically, we were a full municipality police. Our jurisdiction is just the campuses, and we do everything from motor vehicle stops to apprehending people. And we also take care of what we call the ED, which is the emergency room department. And basically, I want to say the most important thing that I learned was patience with people, not, not, you know, not to be so quick to jump the gun and, you know, accuse people for something that, you know, basically look deeper into things and be able to de-escalate a lot of situations, you know, from everyone who comes in from the city and surrounding towns. We deal with everything. And I think the best thing that I learned was just patience and the ability to speak with people from all different language barriers to, you know, the, working with Worcester PD too as well, and just from people coming in from the city that are, the substance abusers is what I'm trying to say. And I think we dealt a lot with, a lot with that, and it gave me a well-rounded background.
I'll ask, I have a couple, a couple of questions. I do want to give my colleagues a chance to ask questions, but the domestic, domestic issues, domestic disputes or whatever, do you have any experience while at the hospital in dealing with that type of, you know, conflict between family members? And if so, if you can give a little story about what, what might have transpired?
Basically, we, we do have some domestics. Basically, we dealt with a lot with DCF, which is, you know, probably the hardest time for parents, but we, for one of the stories I can think of was, it was a language barrier where this woman was from overseas, I think Iran, and what she thought was right, because over there, it's a little, it's a little different than it is here, she fed her six-month-old soda and was hitting him extremely hard. And the nurse called, saw that, and called us up, called DCF, and we came in and basically was able to take the child away. The hardest part was the mother didn't think she was doing anything wrong, because from her culture and background from where she lives is, it's okay, supposedly, over there. And it was definitely an experience, and, you know, it's not something I want to go through every day, but it had to be done. And, you know, with, that's one of the stories, and we deal with, basically, a lot of gang members who, girlfriends who get abused, who are part of the gang, and they'll try to come in and see them with restraining orders. And we actually had a gentleman who was, somehow made it to her room and had a restraining order against him, and she was sleeping, and she told the nurse that he cannot be here. And I guess he was going in there to abuse her some more. He says he wasn't, but we found a knife in his pocket, so it was, could have been deadly or, you know.
One final question. Not that this would ever happen, but say one night, Chief DeBois is having a good time in Maynard, and pulls out of the parking lot and drives down the street, and you notice he's swerving a little, you know, you don't know who it is, and you notice he's swerving, and you come up to the vehicle, and you note that it's the chief. How do you react?
Chief, you have a good night? I would, I would definitely pull him aside if I didn't know it was him, obviously, and I would call him a supervisor who was on shift, and basically would discuss it with him, what the situation was. But I think most likely pull his car over and give him a ride home, and see basically what the supervisor would want me to do.
Thank you.
Yes.
I take note that you worked part-time for Charlton and Southbridge. Tell me about one day when you were working at one of those towns, and you went home, and you said, "Damn, I did good stuff today."
Um, I'd say we broke up a, I'd say the best thing was we took a firearm off the street, apprehended someone, questioned him, and he was being suspicious. And in Southbridge, I ride along with a full-time officer, because I'm auxiliary, I'm only part-time, so I ride along with a full-time. And basically, he gave me the okay to take the lead, and I found someone being a little suspicious, patted him down, and found a firearm with the full-time officer, and we were able to take it off the street and arrested him for unlicensed of a firearm.
Okay, very good. Chris, questions?
I guess you've got to cover all the work questions. I was going to ask him what he would do if he found a selectman swerving, but I didn't think that's appropriate.
That's a tough question. I figured I'd pick on the table.
But I think in, you know, with some familiarity with the town of Maynard, and there's a lot of people that kind of have a little bit of concern and some questions I've heard that about, you know, a lot of police being hired from outside of town. And my, my question was, you talked about, you know, you want to find a place and make it your home, and make it your own. And the question I think that some people would ask is, are you intend to, you know, move closer to home, and here, being home, making this home as, as well as a place to work? Because I think there's a comfort level with some people, you know, seeing their local police in and around town while they, while they move about town during the course of the day-to-day. It's not a make-or-break question, but it's just a, you know, a question I've heard asked, and I'd just forget, I'll repeat it.
I definitely agree. I do plan on moving closer to here. This is where I plan on finishing up my career, so I, you know, it's about a 40-minute drive for me right now, and that's for every day for 30 years would take, would be.
It's a long ride.
Yeah. So I do plan on it, within the next year, to be able to move up closer in the Maynard area, Marlborough, Hudson, Stowe, somewhere just that cuts my ride to 15 minutes, 20 minutes. Thank you. No problem.
Kevin?
Hi, Thomas, how you doing?
Hey, Lisa.
As a criminal justice major myself, I respect that you've taken career path into law enforcement, and I thank you for your interest in the town of Maynard. But my question to you is, what made you interested in law enforcement?
It's something I knew I wanted to do since I was little. Kind of took a lot longer for me to get where I Kind of took a lot longer for me to get where I am right now. Thought I'd be, you know, when I was 22, I thought I'd be a cop, but, you know, life has its ways, but it's just something that I grew up, just always wanted to do. All my friends are cops. I just, this is, I can't see myself doing anything else. I'm always, I'm a people's person. I like to protect people. I like to, you know, do things with the community, just... I work in a group, I'm not a very good individual person, so I like to be around people who have the same camaraderie as I do.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions from the board? Question to you, Kevin.
Yes.
I'm a little uncertain as to what a motion would be. Is this immediate appointment, future appointment?
It would be a motion to appoint effective December 1st, 2014, for indefinite term.
December 1st.
As a patrolman. December 1st, 2014 is the effective date.
Okay. All right, well then, I will make a motion to appoint Thomas Almarino to position as patrolman for the town of Maynard, effective December 1st, 2014, for an indefinite term. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Egan got the second. All right, do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
If you guys can sign.
Which one is yours? This one?
That's it. If you just give me a moment.
No, you can do blue. I just do blue, because it can be scanned.
It's a little early for my Christmas present.
I know, it is a little early for my Christmas present. I want to take a little break here to point out that tonight is a soft opening for the Fine Arts Theater. We're all stuck here instead of watching movies, but I was able to get the good stuff, so I brought popcorn for everyone. At least have that. The party's a bucket. The basket's a bucket. Thank you.
The audience just a fight over one. Enjoy the best from the fighters.
You ain't doing nothing.
You're the first.
Mr. Chairman, the video is now broadcast.
Uh-oh. And five one.
So, Mr. Chair, just while we have the chief with us, we have the additional item if you indulge the chief with regards to the parking ban.
Yes.
There's a requirement for the board to approve the annual winter parking ban. I believe the language is before you that, just as a summary, from December 1st to March 15th, overnight parking ban goes into effect on the public ways, municipal lots. For the first couple of weeks, we give out warning tickets, which are a copy that you have in your packet. So we'll put those on the vehicles. We'll also post something, try and get something in the Beacon Villager and on the websites just to notify the community that the ban's going to go into effect December 1st. And like I said, for the first couple of weeks, at least, we'll give out any warnings to anybody parked that's a violation of the ban. It's really critical for the, you know, when the snow falls, for the DPW to not have to go around all the vehicles, so try and get the word out a little early and have it go into effect. So it's just an annual vote that the board does.
All right, and I appreciate that you're calling out the no parking on sidewalks as well, because I'm always amazed at the people who move from the street to the sidewalk and they end up having families and kids walking in the street in the dark, and I think that's...
I agree, and I do get, you know, periodic complaints about that from people trying to, you know, they're trying to get, make the, you know, street passable, but then they block the sidewalk, so it is kind of an ongoing battle we have with that type of enforcement. It's pretty common.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board?
One quick one, Bill. I think it came up, it may have come up in the packet, but Chief, just to clarify, we're going to do warnings for the first few weeks. That's assuming that...
Thanks.
Yeah, I was going to say, assuming that it doesn't actually snow in the first...
Correct. Correct.
If it snows, that we are going to start moving folks.
Yes, and I'll, I mean, I'll post this as soon as you take the vote. We'll put it on the website, in the town website, and I'll put it in the beacon so that the word gets out as a reminder. But then we'll start putting these out before December 1st, just to kind of, probably, that's why I said probably going to be longer than two weeks, but if it does snow, then not going to really have a choice. We end up towing cars if they're obstructing the plows. We do everything we can not to. We'll go try and wake people up or whatever, but what ultimately happens is, you know, we can't get a hold of everybody, so a couple of cars get towed and explain it to them the next day why.
I think it snowed the second day last year.
Oh, did it?
I think we were late one year, too.
Last year was, last year was late.
It snowed before we got the ban out.
Yes, well, we don't tend to ban things in October. Couldn't have called that one.
Just to that, Mr. Chair, if I could, just to add to that, you know, the police department's aware, this will be our first year without the parking deck, so there's potential issues that could arise from that due to some of the businesses, the residences above some of the businesses on Main Street over the years had kind of given sort of unregulated or unofficial, unapproved parking rights to tenants that occupied some of those spaces, and wasn't as much of a concern when the parking deck was there, wasn't an area that they needed to worry about clearing below, but this year it could pose a problem if there's vehicles that are parked overnight in the parking area, but just want to highlight the fact that this is the first year without the free shelter.
Okay, so noted. So I move to accept and approve the winter parking ban on roadways, sidewalks, and municipal parking lots from December 1st, 2014, through March 15, 2015, during the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion?
I have one question.
Go.
To Kevin's point about the people that used to park under the parking deck whenever it snowed, that lived in that, you know, general vicinity. What are their, what are their parking options now? Because I'm assuming that they park there all the time. You know, when that, when that time comes for December 1st and snowstorms start to come, what do we have as a town? I mean, you know, we're not obligated to offer them a place, but what options do they have, if any?
I don't, I mean, I would suggest, maybe speaking to Clock Tower, that they have the parking garage that maybe, I don't know if they're allowed to rent space from them as an option, private, some type of private parking area. We do run into an issue every year, even when the parking deck was there, people would park in the lot.
Then we're just going to assume that there's not enough spaces to accommodate the people that are renting those properties.
Correct. A lot of the ones on Main Street, I found that they don't have parking spaces, so they use the lot back there.
Yeah.
And that's, that's been the issue.
Last year, there was a tenant that lived above the halfway cafe that actually has since moved. The landlord for the new rentals was understood and implied that there would be no parking available with the apartment unit. We did have an issue with, particularly one of those apartments was an issue last year. The other ones that were parking there were actually individuals that had driveways that on Summer Street that just didn't want to clean their car off, but we've really only seen the impact of only one apartment that was affected. Other folks have places to park, it was just out of convenience. Again, you know, we're not obligated. I've spoke with the property owners that it was affect, you know, would affect, and informed them of, you know, a couple of options, trying to work out parking spaces with private entities, and I don't know where they have left that off, but the town has no public space that can be dedicated without the need of being plowed, so...
And that's really when the issue comes in, is when we get a significant snowfall.
I just know there was a lot of cars parked in it.
Yeah, there is.
Back in it when it was there.
All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I'd like to make a comment. I don't know whether the chief is aware of the fact that we do have signs posted throughout the entry roads into town about the restrictions for the time for winter parking.
Yes.
I don't know whether you're aware of that or not.
I am.
We've spent some pretty good dough on that. I just hope what you're proposing here matches up with what it says on the signs.
I hope it does, too.
We took care of that a couple of years ago when we changed the date.
I agree. I mean, this is what's been enforced since prior to my arrival, so I'm just copying what was done prior. But I'll check the signs and make sure it conforms.
As long as you're aware that the town is posted.
Right.
Yeah, there's a slight chance, I mean, we used to do this before Thanksgiving, and that kind of messed up with over holiday visitors and stuff.
I think we actually shortened this. I think, I want to say it went to April 1st. So we're making it a little easier for people.
And we also, we shortened it on the front end and on the back end because of what Bill said, there were problems with people who had holiday guests for Thanksgiving, and that were getting told they couldn't park there overnight. It wasn't snowing.
Seventy degrees. Looked bad. But anyways, okay, so all in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously, five to nothing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, I'm in trouble if I'm going to eat all this popcorn myself, but I'll try. The next item is a discussion about the council and aging director position. It has historically been a part-time position, and the recommendation from staff is to make it full-time, and Andrew is going to tell us why that's a good idea, and we'll have to consider the impact of that, especially the financial impacts on future budgets, but Andrew, it's all yours.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you look in your computer file, you'll see a PowerPoint labeled COA to BOSS, and Zach's going to put it up on the screens for the audience in a moment. There it is. So there's a photo of a recent luncheon that some of our seniors attended. The woman with the big smile, her name is Nyer, and she's one of our primary volunteers down at the current senior center, and the type of person that we want to start supporting with a stronger facility, as well as with stronger leadership. If you'll indulge me for just a minute, I want to show you very briefly what's going on right now, and then I'll lead very quickly into answering the budget question that is the reason I'm sitting here. So if I can get this to go, there we go. I'm not going to have any luck tonight. There we go. There's our current facility. If you haven't had the pleasure of going there, I strongly encourage everyone to take a visit. It's in Clock Tower 2, on the lower level, and it's a dark, windowless area, and it's undersized for our needs, low ceilinged, and it's full of hand-me-down furniture, a lot of it in terrible condition. Does not represent anything that the town wants to be proud of, in my opinion. Should take a moment here to introduce, reintroduce John Edson, he's in our audience. He's the chairman of the board of the COA, and has been a wonderful asset to me this fall in picking up the pieces since our director left service and then subsequently passed away. We've been trying to pick up the pieces ever since. One of the ideas that we've gestated out and have now brought to fruition is moving the facility into the clubhouse at the Maynard Country Club. And you can see the difference of the view that people will get from a windowless basement to being able to look out on a golf course every day. It's a larger facility, and will provide them with a variety of things that they can't get in the current facility. These are some photos of what's going on down there. We've gutted the back rooms, they were locker rooms, the current clubhouse management was not using and felt that there was no need for, as the club went from being private to municipal, members weren't leaving things behind as they would in a private facility. They were coming just for day play. So the locker rooms were basically vacant. We've gutted them, and we've started the rebuilding process. If you look on this photo here, the back area to the left is likely to be the new office for our future director, and where that plywood is sitting against the wall, the wall's actually detached from the building. That was repaired today. We just discovered it earlier this week. But there's a lot of things that we went in there and said, "Oh, we can do this, and we know it's going to cost a little bit of money, and we're going to stay on budget, I assure you." But there's a lot of problems in there with some of the physical structure of the building, the poor care it's received over the years. All the windows leak. This is the larger room of the two, that doorway in the back of this photo that's open leads into the first photo I showed you. Here's an angle, a photo from the other angle, it's a room about 800 square feet or so. There's a total of about 1,300 square feet down there that will be space dedicated to this facility. The rest of the clubhouse will be shared use with the management company. So for instance, we can use the dining room, we're using it tomorrow for our shine program, and we can always have sort of that overflow into that area when the golf course isn't using it, which is the prime time that the seniors will be using it during the days, during the week, not nights and weekends.
If I may interject, Andrew, it's nice to see that it will actually have some daylighting versus the darkness of the current facility.
Yeah, if you need a reminder, and that's actually a pretty bright picture of that dank basement, so you can see the quality of some of the furniture in there. Look at that table there with all the wood, metal trimmed on the wood, and it's breaking away. We had a meeting there over the summer, some of the selectmen will recall that no one wanted to sit in one particular chair, because it didn't look too sanitary.
Just to interject if I could, Andrew, it's probably important to mention the status of Clock Tower Place in the future of, you know, that space was a donation over the years by Clock Tower Place, and, you know, its future wasn't, you know, imminent, you know, it's coming to a point where we've had conversations with management over there over the last, you know, six, eight months anyway, that they're probably rethinking the use of that space for us anyway. So timing-wise, this is all gelling nicely, but again, we were in borrowed space that wasn't, the Doc Dingey was great, and beggars can't be choosers, but just to highlight the fact that, you know, our tenure there was short-lived, anyway, so...
So we expect, in the next few weeks, at our next meetings, I'll show you some updated photos of the space as the construction moves forward, but we expect the place to look livable by early December, and we'll have it ready for early January. So you'll see some dramatic changes. You can see the flooring there, the carpet's been pulled up, some of the subflooring needs to be replaced. The whole place is going to be painted with just like a primer color, and then we'll decide how to paint it once we move in, or just before we move in. And here's a, relatively to scale, this is just done in Excel pretty simply, trying to keep this on a budget, so I didn't hire an architect, but that's approximately what the space will look like. We may move the office actually towards the middle of the room, to where that dividing wall is, in order to open up. The area on the left of that photo looks out on the golf course, and so if we move the office to the center, it would enable us to put in larger windows that would then take more advantage of that vista. The back of the building and the right-hand side look out over the maintenance area and the parking lot, so there's less reason to put in a great big bay window there. There will be a kitchenette. middle of the room to where that dividing wall is in order to open up. The area on the left of that photo looks out on the golf course. And so if we move the office to the center, it would enable us to put in larger windows that would then take more advantage of that vista. The back of the building and the right-hand side look out over the maintenance area and the parking lot. So there's less reason to put in a great big bay window there. There will be a kitchenette, something that they do not have down at Clock Tower with running water and the ability to make a pot of coffee without having to run 200 feet to the restroom to get water. And that's about all I want to say about that. Importantly, folks like Chair Edson and some of the members like Tom Papsen, Diane Wazek, and Anita Dolan are, the four of them are meeting to decide on things like what furniture to put down there. There's quite a few pieces, despite the condition of things at the mill, there's a few pieces that are new or in wonderful condition. We'll certainly be repurposing those, reusing those. And then, but they're deciding what we should be putting in there. All those kinds of decisions I'm leaving to the board. It's not up to us. The only decisions that the town's really controlling is what we're doing with the facilities. We can't do everything. We don't have an unlimited budget for it. So the facilities manager and I are trying to decide where the most value add is in making these decisions. For the last bullet point on there, avoiding permanent structural changes. Those are things that we just can't afford to deal with in the short term. We consider the move down there to be temporary, but it'll probably be for a couple of seasons. So we need to do the right things for the short term and the long term financially as well. To that end, there's an awful lot that the Council on Aging wants to accomplish and will accomplish in the, in the future. The space at the golf course is not adequate. The space at the mill is not adequate. But there's lots of unused spaces around town. So I went to the COA conference in October, and one of the things I came away with is that phrase that you hear about raising children, how it takes a village. And I see a similar analogy to providing services to the senior population. We can do it throughout the community at our schools, at the library, here at Town Hall. There are spaces that are underutilized and will get used for activities where and when appropriate. And that instead of building a huge facility that's used, say, 30 hours a week and sits idle, we'll just take better advantages of the resources already here in town until the time comes that perhaps we do build a community center for the whole community to enjoy. How are we going to pay for all this? Well, you know that at Town Meeting last week, the renovation work was appropriated by Town Meeting. I was very happy to see that. But the question before us tonight is, how can we move from having a part-time director to a full-time director? What will that impact be on the town's budget? For the remainder of this fiscal year, there'll be no impact. In fact, I expect that we'll be returning money to the town in June from the Council on Aging budget. If you look at the slide on the screen now, there's a budget of $167,000 from the four different areas we receive money. The general fund, the state grant, the LRTA allocation, and money that comes in from riders. They pay to ride the van. They pay for some of their meals.
Clarification on LRTA?
Yes.
New people in the audience?
LRTA is the Lowell Regional Transit Authority. We receive a allocation as an MBTA community. It's managed through the LRTA for this community. They provide us with the vans that we use. They provide all the maintenance on the vans, et cetera. And in exchange for that, we provide the driver and provide the senior van services. The, so that $167,000 is there for us to use to pay for all of our Council on Aging needs. My next slide shows you what I think we should be spending. And in FY15, we have a budget, the left column, for about $112,000. That was with a part-time director. For the next, if we are able to hire a director, we would probably hire as early as January. And for a full-time director from January to June, plus the money we've already spent and the money I would expect to see that director spend on programming, I would anticipate spending about $150,000 for the year. So we have $167,000. And I would anticipate with a full-time director spending 150, which means that we could return 17,000 to the general fund to free cash at the end of the fiscal year. And I would say that even the 150,000 is an aggressive spending plan for a new director. They're probably going to spend a month just figuring out where they keep their pencils and pens and that sort of thing. And so doing a half a year of programming in six months for a brand-new employee, the spending might actually be a little lower than that. But I mention it because starting then in July of 2015, we would be looking for a whole year's salary. And that budget is going to be more like $200,000. So it's important for us to consider this as we ask you to approve a full-time director, that while there's essentially no cost in fiscal 15, the cost in fiscal 16 to the community would be between 30 and 60,000. And I'll turn you to the slide on the screen. First bullet is the 17,000 I mentioned that would likely come back to the town. The next slide, the thirty, or the next bullet, the 31,000 is what it would cost over this year's, over the 150,000 that I showed you, the 167,000, excuse me, the full-year allocation. We would need another 31,000 to pay for the director for the full year, along with 12 months of programming instead of just six months of extra programming. The other 30,000 on that slide is really a placeholder. I'm certainly not requesting that money. What I want to suggest to the board is to consider that the seniors in this community are very underserved. Most communities have several employees, either full or part-timers, working for their councils on aging to meet the needs of the seniors, which is the charge of the Council on Aging. Those services include outreach, social work, home health aides and nurses. Some of those services we outsource now through an organization called Minuteman Senior Services. But some of those are better provided with an actual employee. I would leave the argument for that to the new director, somebody far more qualified than I, to outline the need in this community and what services can and can't be provided by that person and by Minuteman. But I would suggest that it's highly likely that we'll be looking for more money in the future to support our seniors. So I throw it out there as something to consider. Perhaps we do the 31,000 in fiscal 16 and bump it up to a $61,000 increase for fiscal 17. But I didn't want you to hear about it down the road. This isn't just a one-off. This is a long-term commitment. And the last bullet, I think, should be also realized. When I was at the conference in October, I learned that there are numerous grants available from the states, from private charities, and even from the federal government. Some of them are small, a few hundred or thousands of dollars. Some of them are quite large. Maynard's taking advantage only of the formula grant from the state, which essentially is fill out some paperwork and they give you some money. The other grants are more competitive, but there's oodles of money out there. And a full-time director and folks like Chairman Edson and myself driving some attention to it, I believe we'd be able to bring in some of that money for this community and for our seniors.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd like to separate the discussion a little bit in any discussion on, you know, the concept of adding two part-timers. We not talk about that tonight. That's a, you know.
Just wanted to bring it up.
One of the multi-budget issues that we'll be dealing with in the upcoming months. But the opportunity to, well, we need to fill the COA director position and the opportunity to do so as a full-time, you know, the opportunity is before us. The need is existing. And although it's somewhat unique to change a position in the middle of the year, that's why it's being brought before us tonight. So I'd like the focus of discussion on whether the board is thinking that we should move that up to a full-time position. Before I open up the discussion with the rest of the board, I would point, try to get some clarification on the numbers, the 31K-ish number. I'm wondering if that includes indirects because it'll now be a benefit position and we might have health insurance and retirement and, you know. I mean, I always, in my mind, add another 25 or 35,000 a year for that sort of stuff.
You're an awfully generous man. The.
I'm thinking the long-term cumulative effect of retirement benefits.
Sure. And that is another big discussion we will have someday. This, the 31,000 does not include the cost of a health plan, which in this community would range from about $6,000 to $7,000 for an individual to about $25,000 for a family plan, our high-end plan. The community pays three-quarters of those figures. So say 4,000 to 21,000 would be our potential cost on a hire. It could also be zero if they undertake.
Prior employee was also benefit-eligible, just not eligible for retirement. Retirement's at 24 hours, but she was eligible and took health insurance. Well, she at one point did. So at 20 hours, it's still a benefit-eligible position.
Right. Yeah, 20 hours is the state law.
So really, the big change is going from OBR savings to the retirement.
So, well, the retirement doesn't cost the town. The money comes out of the employee's salary. And it's the current, current employees pay what we call in the local parlance nine plus two, roughly 11% of your salary. And it fully funds your pension at the state level. It's our longtime employees that were paying much less than the nine plus two that have us in the negative, essentially our current retirees.
Five percenters.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's no cost for pension. There is a cost for health. And there is a cost for OBR, which is health post-retirement.
So Kevin, can you remind me, under the current charter, not the revised that has not yet been voted on, the appointment of the COA director is directly by the COA with your input?
With TA input, that's correct.
Or your veto or whatever it is?
Yeah, it's, it's, the current charter, the COA director appointment is the Council on Aging with a TA input and then day-to-day management under the administration.
And so question to Andrew is, is the, would the COA be prepared to do that work? Do we have the board half in?
Absolutely. Since we reconvene the board with a quorum on a regular basis, and then the former director left service, we've been discussing replacement in the process. And it led us to this point where we are asking for the full-time position. But along the way, we've already talked about convening a search committee. Members of the board are interested in serving on it. The executive director of the Boys and Girls Club has offered her services as a part of the search committee. And I would include other full-time people from the town on that as well. So they're keenly aware of their role in the process, and they're highly motivated to do something about it.
Okay, very good.
And I need Andrew Beck. And I need Andrew Beck.
Oh, I thought he was running for the position.
So did I.
I can assure you, it's nearly a full-time position for me. And I'm doing 10% of what they might need done.
All right, let me open this up. Tim, questions from you. That's easy. Chris, oh, man, I like the new guys. All right, David.
Yeah, as you know, Andrew, I'm a huge proponent of the senior programs and moving that into the 21st century beyond what we've been at for the last several years. I am a bit concerned about the long-term fiscal picture and how it affects the overall budget. Confident that we can work through that and that it would not be something that we would be regretting down the road. Because I think the long-term benefits from having the, you know, the full-time Council on Aging Director and getting us up to speed to where we should be will far outweigh the costs that it may be down the road. In addition, you know, the future is clear. We've heard it multiple times that our senior population is growing. So the importance of this position will be magnified as the years go on. But it is something I think that the board is going to need to really be, you know, aware of and concerned about and focus on, that we don't forget that this is, that this is coming in future years. So.
It's here now.
And it's here now.
If our police and fire chiefs were here, I would ask them to talk about the calls for service they get in homes in our community and the cost of that. And if we have an outreach coordinator or even just a director who can do some of this work and are interceding and providing services before they become critical issues, I would be willing to bet we could justify the cost savings on that, on those types of calls alone. And the population will be 50% larger in 2020 than it was in 2010 in this community and throughout the Commonwealth.
And I'm heartened by the sense of enthusiasm that I'm getting from the involvement of the seniors. And the seniors seem to be anticipating the improved, you know, the improved council, the improved services. I have, you know, I have an affinity towards, as I guess all of us do, towards seniors in that, you know, I've had an opportunity to, to engage with some senior centers and senior councils on, Council on Aging's in other communities through family issues. And the services that are available elsewhere compared to Maynard, as you expressed earlier, is, you know, it's, it's night and day. So it's time to bring us there and it's time to get it started. And so I support this. I just think we do have to be mindful of the fiscal aspect of it as we move forward. But I'm confident that we will be.
Very good. Jason?
Andrew, I have a couple of questions. One, just refresh my memory, you said FY15 that we would under-run by 17,000?
Yeah, those are, well, the 167 is a real budget number. The 150 is my estimate of what we would spend if we hired a director on January 1st.
Okay.
At a full-time rate. And the other programming, I would expect that director to perform.
Okay. And then the 31,000 for FY16 is?
On top of the 167.
Okay.
So essentially, let's call it 200,000, just for a round figure.
Okay.
For the FY16 request, if I was submitting a budget today, might be 200,000. Part of that, so you should know, is that we're posting the position, or we would post the position with a salary range depending on qualifications. So we get a real ace in here. The 200,000's probably a very real number. We get somebody with some more modest qualifications, we might take, you know, 5,000 or 10,000 off of that.
Yeah, what I'm looking, I'm just looking at, you know, if we're talking about this for the first, you know, year and a half of operation, if we're getting, you know, if we're returning 17,000 plus to free cash, I mean, I personally would have no issue rolling that into the next year, which cuts that down. How does this affect the regionalization effort?
So those are ongoing conversations, and they really color the conversation about, say, the outreach coordinator and the social worker. For instance, our neighbor Stowe has part-time outreach and social workers. Perhaps we can discuss with them partnering those positions, maybe come full-time for one town or the other, and provide those services to both communities with the same local professionals. But that's not a decision I could make today. It's certainly something that we're embracing. I meet with Allison Tool, the, excuse me, the director over there. I met with her in October. Kevin and I met with her in August. So we'll continue those conversations. Similarly, with Acton, we've had conversations about shared services, and Acton's open to it. I really think it's something that a new director would have to embrace. I am completely unqualified to be a senior center director. And my knowledge of the issues has grown by leaps and bounds in the past three or four months. But a professional comes in here and they may have completely different take on things. And I would rely on them to advise.
Okay. And if we were to go out and hire a full-time director, would they come in under one of our CBAs? Or are they going to come in as a separately contracted employee?
Boy, you got some really good selectmen this year. Excellent question, Mr. Creel. During our last con- During our last contract negotiation sessions over the summer, we asked the clerical union to remove the COA director from their union because that position supervised other members of the same union, which we find to be sort of a conflict of interest in a lot of cases. They agreed to that. Subsequently, our director left, and so now we have this unfilled position, also untethered to a union. However, I'm a firm believer in using CBAs to our advantage. Imagine negotiating with 108 employees every year. It would be pretty much a two or three persons full-time jobs. So collective bargaining agreements simplify many people's lives. And we've approached another union that this position would fit into more naturally, which is our professional staff union, to see if they would accept the person for membership. And there's a few little caveats about that, it's not a done deal. One of them is that that union has all its employees on 40-hour positions, and we're considering only hiring the full-time position if you approve it for 35 hours or 37 and a half hours. And that has to do with the reality of how many hours of service we expect the person to provide, so why, why hire them for more? So it's an ongoing conversation, but we would expect them to be part of a union.
Just, Mr. Chair, if I could, just to add to that, there is actually one individual that's on a side letter that does work 37.5 hours, and that's the building commissioner. Without a doubt, this position meets the parameters of what was formerly the Department Ed Union and is now termed professional, professional something, union we changed.
Personnel.
Personnel. Without a doubt, that this position would get petitioned to be put into that union anyway. I mean, it, it's clearly not exempt from, from the way that's structured. So we would be looking to hire under the parameters of that union, which has a lot of advantages, as we said. There's no more salary grade structure. We negotiate a competitive salary that we feel is, you know, is, is a good salary for the position that's independent of any grievance or, you know, union action. So it allows us, still allows us, although it is a union, still allows us a lot of flexibility with the hiring piece. And again, as, as Andrew said, we're looking at potentially 35, 37 and a half hours, and if we do put it into this union, we probably would do another side agreement as well for that particular position.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I'm going to...
Mr. Chair, can I just say one other thing? Just in support of this, as Andrew's done a great job presenting, spent countless months. Thank you to John Edson and other members of the council for their work on it. One key element to highlight, which Andrew didn't, is that this position, as opposed to in prior years past, will be directly supervised. Prior years past, there was no accountability to the COA director, there was no goals and priorities and, you know, oversight of the position, if you will. Moving forward, the structure that we have in place, the director will still report to the assistant town administrator, will regularly meet with the assistant town administrator so that priorities and all of that is still in line with the board and administration. So that's one key area that, as we move forward, we've, this, you know, it's been a long time. This isn't something we've come up with, so the audience knows, this isn't something that's come up in the last month, this has been a long time in the making. And we've put a lot of thought, Andrew and the council, put a lot of thought into it, and everything has been calculated. And so I just want to make sure that the board, you know, knowing the prior practice with the council on aging and how the operations are, assure you that now with the existing management structure, that there'll be better oversight of that position. I really think we're going to see some real results because of that. And again, just on the budget piece, I've spent countless hours, as has Andrew, looking at similar communities, demographics, populations, and the budgets, and agreed with selectman Gavin, that's always my immediate concern, is the impact of the budget. But we've been kicking the can down the road for years. We're at a point now where we need to deal with it, but it's woefully under-budgeted in comparison to, you know, other communities. And as Andrew said, 25% of our population, that's only going to grow over the next 15 years, so that's just my closing piece on it.
All right. Very good. Well, I make a motion that we approve elevating the council on aging director to a full-time position. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? Well, I'll just point out that I can see the value in this, and I think it's worthwhile for the community as a whole in so many ways, so I'm going to be glad to vote yes. All in favor? Motion passes. Five, nothing.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Andrew.
Andrew, before you leave, a quick question. While I think it's great to see the mailing comes out, is there a way to target that or is it intentional that it goes to every resident? And is there a savings that we could find relative to the mailing that it goes to? I mean, I see benefit in that people recognize their taxpayers' money is going towards a good cause, namely seniors. But is there a way to target it to a different audience?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a method to the madness there. First of all, that's one of the first pieces of advice I got from Allison over in Stowe. It was actually from the chairman, chairwoman of their board. She said, send it to everybody in town. One of the problems with not sending it to everybody in town is that the demographic is constantly moving.
Mm-hmm.
So somebody's constantly editing the mailing list because people pass away or move and people want to join up. Send it to every house in town, that's, it's a, it's a non-issue. We don't even have to do mailing labels, we just print resident on the envelope. So that's a, that's a huge time savings and everybody gets it. But what Stowe told us was that there's lots of non-seniors who care. They have parents, they have, they have neighbors that may be in need of these services and may not avail themselves of it or realize it. And so now more people know about what's going on and can, can pass the word.
Good.
And then the final piece is, they sell a lot of advertising. We haven't started that yet, but right now we can afford to do three or four newsletters a year. If we sell ads, we could do them monthly. There's no doubt that there's a, a market for advertising that we could collect. It's, it's a time and resource thing, but that would be the intention.
Okay.
Offset the cost of advertising.
Obviously, you thought about that issue and Stowe gave the advice, and so I think it's probably good advice.
Yeah, there's some smart people over there.
Yeah.
Some smart people here in Maynard as well.
It is part of the overall budget, but it's actually part of the state allocation money that pays for it. It's not part of our general fund, operating budget, town money, if you will.
That's good, no, I thought it was just because I was old and that I got it. The next one is updates for the new selectmen, and it really is for the new selectmen too, but I think we've done the senior initiatives update already. But Kevin, if you can give us, you know, a two or three-minute spiel on the various task lists we got going on.
Sure.
Not that we're going to resolve anything, but we know what we're juggling at the moment.
Yeah, first, I just want to highlight a couple of, not necessarily project things, but there is some items that Becky had put in, in the packet specifically for the new board members that are listed out with regards to committee chairs and prior BOS letters regarding 129 Parker Street, copies of public body checklist.
You're stealing my chair.
All that stuff. Is that part, your chair report?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was part of updates.
Sorry, take care of it.
I have to feel useful.
Wrap it up.
All right, good. So, yeah, one item that I will share, prior meetings we've sent, this is a request for the historical commission with regards to, I don't know if, if you're familiar or not, the Coolidge School Administration Building around Bancroft Street. The school administration is relocating to the Fowler School, the old eighth-grade wing of the Fowler School. They're currently doing some small renovation work to allow for that move and anticipate moving over there sometime in December. That leaves the town with an empty building, Coolidge School. So there's been an active request from the historical commission to look at potentially saving that building and possibly even forming a, some sort of committee to look at potential uses of that building or alternatives for that, whether it be sale, auction. And currently, what we're looking at is figuring out how to, moving forward, if we were to go that direction and actually auction off the actual school and some amount of property, looking at the process for actually doing a, either, you know, some kind of A and R to split off, because the existing parcel includes the school building as well as the newly renovated, improved Coolidge Park. It's the entire, encompasses that entire parcel, which is like 2.47 acres. So if we were to go down that route, we'd have to have a process in place to actually A and R, separate the, you know, with the, with a survey and separate the, that piece to sell off and auction off and then maintain, the town maintain the playground piece. So that's still ongoing. I don't think we actually, at this point, have taken any action to establish any committee or anything. I've looked at, I've sent the board all of the assessments I could find with regards to the condition of the building, an AECOM report as well as a...
Tape.
Tape Associates, the architectural firm, that did an assessment as well. I have not been able, I know, Bill, you mentioned a prior study committee, but I haven't, I haven't been able to locate any reports or findings or any even formation of this committee that existed. Yeah, so I don't know what, what if any recommendations might have come out of that or, you know, what work they might have done. I don't know if anybody in the audience remembers the makeup of that committee, but I couldn't find any record of it or documents that would have come out of it, so.
Kevin, not to interrupt, but I will interrupt. The, there was a process that was included in one of our packets within the last couple of weeks regarding the statutory requirements for the school to turn the building, actually literally turn the building over to the town if they so desired. Has anything begun in that process? Have the school, has the school made it clear that they intend to pursue that? And if so, should we be sort of leading the wave rather than reacting when time comes, they move out and suddenly, well, wait, wait, we have this, we have that?
Yeah, no, those are good points. Actually, Andrew and I...
You're saying that's town meeting action? Is that correct?
Yeah.
To dispose of it? To dispose of it or to transfer it?
Or to transfer it.
Definitely to dispose of it. I'd have to reread that memo and the process, but it is on the radar. I've actually, it's on our list for discussion. Andrew and I tomorrow, meeting with the superintendent and the business manager over there. It, it hasn't been pressing because they're still in there. They've committed to maintaining the building through the end of the fiscal year, so through June 30th, they have it, that they'll continue to monitor the building, send a custodian over, pay any costs that are associated with closing it down. But, yeah, absolutely, it's, it's part of our discussion and it could be something for the spring.
And one other point, somewhat related but really not related, is you are probably aware, but the new members may not be aware, tomorrow night, there's a historical commission meeting regarding a bylaw that I don't know too much about, but I think it's somewhat related in that it has to do with demolition delay.
Demolition delay bylaws, so that people can't come in and just knock down historical buildings or potentially historic buildings.
So unfortunately, I have other, I'm doing some family stuff tomorrow night, believe it or not, finally have an opportunity to spend some time with my family, but, so I'm unable to attend. I sent a note to the, to the chairman of the historical commission to tell him that, but that might be of interest to people.
Yeah, I did a full press release with regards to that, that event, and there's a one that follows that as well, that did make the beacon as well as other avenues. So I know it's been fairly well advertised and we'll see, it's, it's open to other communities as well, specific for the demolition delay bylaw, so.
Yeah.
Good point. So I guess, you know, that's part of, again, part of the conversation that we're having with the superintendent to gauge where they're at, what the next steps are. If we were to go down that road again, we'd have to do a survey, look at potentially doing a approval not required in A and R, and then also a, we still would have to do the deed research to see what's, any covenants and anything like that. We haven't done any of that work either. But we can, we can go down that direction if the board, I don't know if that's a good time for discussion now, but if the board has no intentions in forming a reuse committee or not, I don't know.
Well, I, I don't want to get into big discussion about each issue because we'll be here forever, but.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll have to bring some of these up as standalone agenda.
Okay. Yeah, so we're having the discussion, but they're still there now through, through December. The other item I had, still projects going on, we're still looking at the Crow Park, the parking lot that's at Green Meadow, which is the former skate park there. We've pulled the deed and still looking further. We see, currently see no conservation restrictions that have been noted that were on it. And I have a deed, have the deed from 1901, we've gone back and looked at, and we're doing the research on it, but looking right now, it doesn't look like there is any conservation restrictions on that property. I don't know if folks are familiar with it, but if this is a great road, if coming into that parking lot outside across from Crow Park, you can drive, I think there's a chain there now, you drive in, that's the area we're talking about, potentially just expanding for additional parking or other options. So that's ongoing.
Have we determined that the police and the school committee would like to investigate that for?
The police department and DPW are interested in it.
How about school?
And that's on the list with the superintendent for tomorrow.
They'll be happy if the town budget comes in.
Yeah.
Well, no. Next step is to see if they want it, so, okay.
Yeah, a couple other ongoing projects that are dealing with, we'll have an executive session with regards to litigation. Regional initiatives, again, we continue to explore any and all opportunities that we can improve services and cut costs. As Andrew's mentioned, we've met with Stowe Council on Aging, met with Acton, some selectmen actually in Acton that were part of some committed resources. Two of them are actively engaged in the regional transportation effort with the cross-town connect, so we've had side conversations with them. They seem to be open with it, as well as with the COA director over there, as well as with the Stowe COA director and the Stowe chair of the council on aging. We continue to explore those opportunities as well as others. I had an opportunity to speak back in early October with the Stowe Board of Health, who asked me to come over and discuss potential regionalization opportunities with their department as they're seeing a health agent retiring at the end of the fiscal year and what, where Maynard and Stowe collaborate on a lot of those things. We've attempted to have the conversations with administration. They have a different philosophy than we do over there, but they, they kind of want to see it be driven from the bottom up, so we've gone through that process and we'll continue to, you know, to look at those opportunities as they come. The big things are, some, the opportunities for regionalization is funding opportunities that come, whether it be for new facilities or seed money to, to fund regional program initiatives. The two CPC articles that were submitted, the Board of Selectmen sponsored, actually Tim's familiar with them.
We've got a mole now, so. I believe it's called a liaison, Bill.
Yeah. One of them is, we've made a...
A good tale.
A real effort to try to improve the perception of town hall and the aesthetics of town halls, particularly when you come in. The entrance has been a massive improvement from what has been out there in the last year, just with trying to clean up loose-end papers and different stuff that was stored out in the hallway, and it's still ongoing. Part of that effort is we're looking at doing a, a display case, maybe a built-in display case to display the town archives, some old, different various archives, one of which that's particularly stands out is the town's time capsule, which is currently stored in the vault, and that's one particular item that we would like to get into a display case. And again, it's part of the improvements for that, for the lobby and some other initiatives. The other CPC article was with regard... The other CPC article was with regards to, what is it, the rail trail that we did? Was that the one that was submitted?
Yes.
Yeah. It was an article for the continuation of the rail trail project and some of the additional costs associated with, with obtaining that, with that project moving forward. Again, that project of town meeting, that project's anticipated currently completing 75% design, potentially by February, and a potential construction of fall 2015, but that's kind of a moving target depending on DOT and GPI, the design engineer. But it is coming and it is moving, so we, once we get that 75%, a big effort on the town will start to be negotiating several easements, both permanent and temporary easements that are needed to move forward with the project.
Compared to the CPC applications, we've made the first-
Yeah, we did a-
I mean, I don't know how long I-
A preliminary application that was due, when was that, the end of our?
September 26th.
September, yeah. September 26th.
Now you're doing a bulked up application or something?
November 14th.
Yeah.
Okay.
What else do I have? Liquor license initiatives, we're still, if you were at town meeting, article passed for a home rule petition. We're still moving forward with, with that request and the next steps with regards to obtaining additional liquor licenses for the town in hopes of some economic development results of such. You heard about the golf course renovations?
Let me back out to liquor license. There was also the, the issue of our local liquor license policies in regards to whether they constrain economic development, and our economic development committee was going to take a shot at providing us some thoughts or recommendations.
Yeah.
Have they moved on that?
I don't think so.
They have not?
No. Probably make it a, I think they have a meeting schedule, we'll probably get it on an agenda for after that to look at it.
Yeah.
Something else Chris was going to take up, yeah, that's what it was, we talked to Chris about that, last time he was in.
Chris is the chair of the meeting.
Yeah, and he was at, he was at one of our meetings too. We mentioned it again to him.
Kevin, is there any update on the carry establishments opening at 10:00 AM?
No, we've had no requests.
Oh.
Doesn't appear to be any interest.
I just wanted to close the loop on that.
But it turns out, we don't have any authority to deny that, correct? It's just they have to let us know their interest.
They have to petition it.
They have to, yeah.
The change of the license.
Change the license and so local option.
We can't deny it when they come to us.
Yeah, just to clarify, the new state law says that you can sell booze instead of noon on Sundays, you can start at 10:00 AM, but stores that want to do that have to send a letter of interest to the selectmen, and then we, you do the paperwork and then they're allowed to do it. But nobody's, nobody's taken that initiative, and it just started like two weeks ago or something.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, the fact of, I think it was two weeks ago.
All right, that's a fair-
There's a lot of activities going on, just, you know, not necessarily higher level projects, but initiatives, you know, it was the recent paving projects that have gone on in town.
And on. And on.
And on, yeah.
And on.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Now, the next item, seven, is the status of past town meeting articles, and we kind of got the information a little late to actually digest it, so-
You got it last meeting, but that's okay.
All I really want for the members is the information that we have, if you just explain how it's presented, so when the people look at the spreadsheets, they can-
Yeah.
Which column means what.
So they're tabulated, the first column on this actual spreadsheet is the, is the total. There's three spreadsheets, yeah, one is the general fund.
Yeah, pick one.
One is the water, one is sewer. If you look at the general fund, it's tabulated.
General fund's the third one that we have, correct? Yes.
Yeah.
Third one in lock, in Dropbox or whatever.
Okay.
And then if you, if you're following along the spreadsheet itself, so this is an initiative, just to kind of give some history, this initiative that, working with the town accountant for several months, actually over the last year, identifying articles that have not been expended, the current status of articles, and next step type of, type of initiatives, reaching out to department heads, those that are responsible for articles that, that are there, and it's, you know, it's not all driven by, you see a date on here and it means it's not, didn't happen, or it's not, a lot of them have answers and rationale, but there's still a lot that are small, fairly minimal nominal amounts of money that are leftover articles that clearly won't be spent. So the way you'll see is, is account numbers in one column, account name, the actual-
Can you run the downtown enhancement fund line? A hundred thousand, that's under our name.
Yeah.
As an example.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine, thirty-five, nine-hundred.
Article sixteen of-
Five oh eight six.
Article sixteen, annual town meeting in May of 2012, selectmen, the fund balance of a hundred thousand dollars. You'll see that there's the sources, there's a gift account, and that's still in there that we've-
I'm having a hard time trying to figure out where it tells me if it's been spent and where it's-
Well, it says, if you look at the column that says close free cash, I would imagine that that means it's still available, never been spent.
So don't, yeah, don't look at the, kind of the last column is, those are our options, we could close it out. After we go through them, we could close it out, depending on whether it was free cash or debt, you can't just close debt out to free cash, you'd have, you'd have to close the debt and reallocate the debt. The other items that are, that are, so if you go and move a column closer, right after where it says fund balance, it's X for debt, FC for free cash, or other source, those last columns just, the, display our options if we would, you know, if the, if the actual articles were to close out, how they close out.
That's the source when the article was moved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Where does it say whether it's been spent or still needed? You know, is the project done? Where's that, where's that?
Columns after this, the source.
Okay, the thing that says open?
Yeah.
And what does the notes in open mean? If it's blank, it means it's done or not done?
Yeah. Yeah, Mike does, the town accountant is here as well. I don't know what that column is.
I tasked it to Kevin Peterson to do. Can I just look at them?
Yeah, sure.
And what we did is, one of the things that I came was to look at monies that could be possibly available, that, so we went through this, we basically discovered, there were a lot of capital projects or items, articles that were just sitting on the books for years, it could be small amounts, large amounts. So basically, when you're looking at this, we went through and we actually put the dates, we put whether it's, you know, DPW, who's responsible. Now, what you see is what the balances are, if you look at where the column says 1031, 214, that's the balance of all of these articles right now. So you see what they did, know if there's any revenue that came in, or if there's anything we expended. What I've also done is, as Kevin pointed out, is put what the source of it was. X means debt, in which case you have to, you know, reallocate it. Now, last invoice gives you, tells you, when was the last time we've spent money? So as you can see, there are some expenses being spent, so some of them could be this year, last year, or they haven't been spent in like five, six, five years or so. What we did then is we took those, all the items that you see there, and I separated them into three columns. Basically, I said anything that is probably within the last year or so, two years since that by 13, I consider it open at this point. Doesn't mean, you know, that it, you know, it can't be closed. Then when I said, you know, close to free cash, what that means, these are old items, these that have not been spent, or, you know, and that they could, could possibly be closed into free cash or reallocated in other ways. Now, the last column is debt. Now, that's very sticky issue because basically you just can't close it, you definitely have to, would have to go to town meeting anyway to reallocate it. You would have to do that also with some of the free cash items too, because if we decided, if you decided to close everything that I have there, you could go to town meeting and say, let's close all these articles and reallocate it to wherever you want. So there are different options, some of the very tiny amounts, you can close without any issues. Larger amounts, yes, you would probably, you know, so you have an option of how you want to do it.
Okay, so I guess one thing that's not on here, and there's no column showing the original amount, what we have is a column showing what was there July 1, 14, right?
Right.
It may have been the original amount, or it may have been-
Right, some of the-
A five-year remainder from the original amount.
Right, I mean, it's something that we could end up, you know, looking at, but it's also going to mean going back, and, you know, it's not impossible task, but we could, we could easily do it, we'd have to go back to probably town meeting articles because the records as they exist, you know.
I'm not big on, you know, going back, I mean, it looks like you already made the call on a few of these, but, you know, moving forward would be good.
Yeah, I mean, why I-
The only one you could find was from '07, that's the oldest one that's on here.
Right, yeah. We went back because we wanted to see how old some of these were, and you see, the oldest is 2007, and it's a small amount of money, but it's been sitting on the books for seven years. So really, the whole idea of this wasn't to say, let's close everything, but let's look at the years, and what's the potential, that if you decided you wanted to close these articles and set a time and a date, you could do it. And now, what I've done is said, okay, the option of how you do it is left up to the board or Kevin, or, you know, how you want to do it. You can either close it directly, some of them, you, you know, you would have to probably just go to town meeting, you know, put a sum total and say, let's reallocate it. You know, I, the options as to how to do it, you know, is something that can be determined. Now, debt, as Kevin pointed out, you don't have a choice.
Has to go to other type of debt.
If you go to, you would have to go to town meeting and you would end up having to reallocate it.
To other debt.
To other debt. Well, what we do is like you're transferring debt, really.
Yeah.
So you could transfer and say, yeah, I have 60,000 and I want to use it to build a-
Could be for another project.
Another project, but you, basically what you're doing is you're transferring debt to debt, that's all.
Is this money, or is this authorization to borrow?
Not even authorization to borrow, all you're doing is transferring the monies that are in this to another project that's similar.
No, that was actual money that was received.
The money is borrowed.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is why you can't-
Exactly.
Oh, I got you, all right.
Right, so I mean, if you borrowed it, for instance, to, you know, to, for say, you know, for the golf course.
Be overborrowed by a little bit.
Exactly.
Just rounding errors and stuff.
Right, I mean, some of these are large amounts, some of them are tiny amounts. I already talked to DOR, and you're saying, hey, you know, if you've got something like a hundred and twenty-six dollars in it today, yeah, you can close it. But if we're going to look at this whole picture, you might as well look at everything and say, let's close everything and let's reallocate it. You know, like I said, you can close some, keep them open, but the choices. Now, enterprise funds, we did hear, that's a whole nother ballgame, because when you're dealing with enterprise funds, I mean, you can close it and everything, but some of these are old, but you may still want to use it and keep them open. Like I said, I tentatively put the column where you say close to free cash or whatever is just my opinion at this point. We, you know, you will, this is something that everybody will have an input in as to whether we keep open or close, or however we do it. I real, I mean, some of these enterprise fund items already have been used because of different things that have been happening around town, so, you know, this is an ongoing project. This is something we started, I think, and gave to Kevin Peterson, we started in, I think in March or April, right before town meeting.
Yeah, we started one too.
And we've updated it since, so.
I got you, okay. All right, so this is-
And so it'll be updated every month, so it's, it's an ongoing process and, you know, everybody's aware of it, including Finkham.
Just curiously, I haven't looked at all of the spreadsheets, I saw the one for the general, the general fund. Was '07 as far back as they went even on the enterprise funds?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So it's, we don't have anything like from 1982 that's-
Everything you see here, the dates are actually from the town meeting vote, and that's what we did. So we, I mean, this is what Kevin, we went through and I said, I want to know when was the original town meeting vote on this, so, you know, if we had to, we can go back and probably pick what the original amount is. But you can see that, like for instance, if you look at some of the police items, you have a police cruiser, you're sitting there with 275, you know, stuff like that, you know, so why don't you buy a cruiser, if, you know, I mean, some of these items could have been used, and they're not.
Yep.
Got you, okay, this is good. I mean, we don't have, I need to discuss what to do with it, I just want to make sure everybody understood how to read this.
I mean, one of the things Kevin tasked me basically was, you know, and that's part of being here, was let's look at what we have sitting on the books that we're not using, money that can be used for other projects, capital projects, whatever you'd like it to be, and as you can see, you know, it's not a small amount of money.
I would imagine that the finance committee might be interested in seeing this.
They have this, they do get a copy of this.
Yeah, I was going to say-
They get the monthly on this?
Yes.
Peter Campbell gets it.
Every single month. So they're aware of it.
Yeah, as Mike said, about a year ago, him and I meet regularly, you know, this was a priority to look and see what's on the books because for years, it just hasn't been happening. And, you know, come up with this spreadsheet, identify those. What we've done several months ago was reach out to department heads and others that had control over certain articles, requested where the status reports of where those are at, and we're just now kind of at a point where we're finalizing, making some decisions that ultimately are vested with, you know, with Mike and his capacity to close them out under, you know, under his authority, so.
And I would point out that town charter requires articles to close out after two years, but-
Can be extended.
But it has enough loopholes that stuff like this happens.
Well, that's one of the things I found when I came here, is that there is an article, a Finkham article that says you can close it, but it's like anything else, you know, to me, at this point, the option should be to go back to every department. I mean, what you see here is also broken up by departments, everyone gets it, is to go back to a department and actually say, okay, this is what we're going to do, here's the cutoff date, you know, and that's it, and basically, you know, that's what would happen. I mean, as Tim will, gosh, we've done the same thing with CPC. Prior to my coming, I don't, there was no reporting, didn't know, I really, no one even thought how many, what articles, you know, projects were open and everything, so I basically went back from its creation and reconciled everything, and now everything is on the books, and there will be items that'll be closing out there.
Well, the benefit of that too is the changes that the CPC made a couple of years ago with the way they're drafted now, is it says after the two years, any remaining fund, if not expended by June 30th of X, two years from out, will automatically go back into, so it's already, that authorization to close it is already there, and there's no, there's no extension beyond that. So if you didn't, if you didn't spend your whole project within that two-year window, it gets, it goes back into the CPC funds, you'd have to request it again. As Bill alluded to, the bylaws that basically say articles go for two years, but there's a, there's a one-year extension with a written request from, you know, a department head justification.
I mean, should some of these have been closed a long time ago? Yes, but, you know, I think at this point, I came in and Kevin gave me the task, and, you know, it's a matter of really how you want to do, close some of these items, you know, I mean.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
That's Mike.
I just want to, Mike, thank you. I was able to sit in on the finance committee, one of the finance committee meetings where they reviewed this, so it was a heck of an effort to go back and track a lot of this. I think Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, it generally started with outstanding bonds we were holding, and then it's now rolled into sort of all these unended appropriations and-
Yeah, that's one of, one of the rationales, the other was, you know, as we look further and further, capital projects is, you know, how do we, where do we come up with funding mechanisms for capital projects in there? I mean, we just saw it, I mean, we just re-appropriated 700,000 from roof repairs from the schools that was an article that existed that had an opportunity to not find money elsewhere and to, to address projects that were needed, so it kind of stemmed from all of that, you know, as you said, and as we look closer at the capital planning advisory group and looking at, hey, what else is, what's out there for articles that we could, you know, repurpose, so.
And I think the credit a lot of it should go to Kevin Peterson, who was assistant down, because I told him what I wanted, and he did all the research- down, because I told him what I wanted, and he did all the research when we-
Yeah, he's done, he spent a lot of work on it.
So, he did all the research in terms of going to town meeting, you know, picking up what town meeting article it was and what year it was. It took a lot of work.
Just for the indulgence of the rest of the board, I could, just to understand why it's, it's as complicated to some degree as it is, is we've gone through three software conversions in a matter of six years, five or six years, some of which data was lost from one conversion to another, or only capital, you know, captured three years of data. So, it's a big undertaking. Normally, if, you know, if we've been operating under, you know, a Vadar system for 20 years, well, we had 20 years of history. A lot of what Mike's worked on over the last year is recapturing that history, getting it into spreadsheets, so that we now have a very good history that we did lo, that we did lose when we went from, you know, one system to Vadar to KVS, and then now, most recently, KVS to Softrite. So, that, that's kind of why some of this history is a little bit challenging, because it takes more research than it would under normal circumstances.
We're trying to recreate the history in just about every area.
And, yeah.
Expenses, revenue, stuff.
About three or four, three or four town accountants in the mix, so, so, that's a good point. A lot of changes in that office, but not lately. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ah, next up is a discussion of the, the upcoming fiscal '16 budget and capital planning process, which I caution all of us will be here way sooner than you think, because we're already behind schedule, actually. I would point out that the budget process is outlined in the charter, and by mid-November, we have the board, as supposedly worked with FinCom and everybody, the town administrator put together a budget message. But as per usual, the town administrator has taken upon himself to save us from missing that deadline, so he's put together a budget message for us, so it's a good start.
Yeah, that, some of that sort of timeline has been, over the years, prior to my role as the town administrator, has been deferred more and more. As we got away from the former budget subcommittees, and that timeline is somewhat, it's followed in the sense that a budget message always gets out by November 15th, but some of the other processes isn't as, certainly as David can attest, the last six years has been more in line with that. But what I've done is I've provided the board with my budget message from last year, FY15 budget, which, you know, there'll be some changes. I spent a lot of time crafting this three-page budget, so as much of it that's pertinent for '16 will carry forward. I highlighted a couple of things just for the board to consider that you'll find in another sheet in Dropbox. Couple of bullets, you know, looking at FY16 is, you know, this year, we'll need to make a decision, again, to invest in our council on aging. That's potentially one impact that's, that's an outlier, that's not a typical, you know, level-funded expense and salary, contractual salary increases, et cetera. So, again, that discussion in, in, you know, recognizable investment in the council on aging is something that we consider in '16. We completed negotiations with several unions, four in total, in FY15. Pretty much FY15, we got through with a very minimal cost of living, as that was from, right from the get-go, established that we weren't going to give more than a 1.5% in '15. Mostly, the budget was set, and, you know, we weren't, we weren't willing to budge in that area. But we did get, as you remember, several concessions from the union, and some of that, we're going to see the impacts of those, monetary impacts of those negotiations will be felt in the next fiscal year, which is FY16. A couple of those, not, not major, you know, but there are impacts that, that will definitely hit our salary line items and increases. Begin of the department requests within the next few weeks, so I'll be holding a meeting for all departments, department heads, at our leadership meeting on November 18th, and discussing the process in depth going forward with them. And I expect that submission will be made by all departments by January 2, 2014, for the FY16 budget. Continue to use the Softrite budget module, which, last year was our first year utilizing that module. There's still a few entities, including the school department, that are not on Softrite that will be submitting paper budgets, which ultimately will get manually entered into the Softrite budget module and have a comprehensive budget, at which time we'll continue to review. The process, by the way, for this, isn't, we're not just dealing with it now. We started, Mike and I meet on a weekly basis, specifically dedicated to FY15 issues, our current issues that, that we're anticipating, but as of October, you know, in the beginning of October, we started meeting to identify discussion on the FY16 budget, working out on the revenue. So, between Mike especially and I have really focused in the last several weeks on FY16 budget process. So, again, January 2, anticipate all departments to submit their FY16 budget, and potentially, you know, this is really the piece for discussion, more than anything, you know, with the board that, you know, tonight, is, is kind of the same type of message, whether it be the, you know, in this case, would be our FY15 appropriation authorized by the May 2014 town meeting, increased by the amount of salary and salary-driven categories, which are mandated by contracts. And then, although this expense budget is level-funded, it should include appropriate increases for all contractual obligations. When I say contractual obligations in that regards for expenses, I'm referring to built-in contractual increases that might be associated with the operation of the wastewater treatment plant, our curbside trash pickup, you know, they have different incremental increases depending on the contract. Those factors need to be accounted for, as well as contractual, you know, salary increases, union increases that are impact. But what I am going to request is that all-
Mr. Chairman?
All departments submit a level, level-funded expense budget, unless there's justification and discussion beyond that, of which, you know, I will be aware of prior to and discussing with particular department heads over some of the outliers. Obviously, you know, we discussed the council on aging as one, there might be a couple of others that I'm potentially seeing arise. So, that would be kind of the, the message that I'm leaning towards.
Sorry, is the message level fund or level service?
Level fund.
Level funded expense budget. So, a level funded expense with covering contractual increase.
Okay.
Level service.
Is it just salary?
Yeah, a level service budget, you're going to see an increased budget.
Okay.
But I think, you know, where we're at with revenues, you know, all, you know, again, this is very early in the process, as you all know. This starts now, by the time we hit April, we're probably on 26, 28 revisions of revenue, 28 revisions of expenses. Mike can tell, there's a lot of time, and it's just constant changes this way, you know. Obviously, I want to be transparent and provide the information, but it's just, it's constantly changing, you know, we're constantly making those updates. But we've already laid out, you know, revenue, you know, will be in, in pretty good shape to cover this, this particular proposal. And, you know, again, with level service, I think, you know, we're going to see impacts that I don't think we want to be at for FY16.
What's our increase in our initial revenue forecast?
Uh, it's about 1.1, 1.2 as of now.
A million or a percent?
No, a million.
What's that as a percent?
Andrew, two and a half.
It'll be a little more than that, yeah.
Well, yeah, you're talking about over the overall general fund budget.
One in 36 million.
Five percent?
Yeah, thirty-six million.
Yeah.
1.2 out of 36.
Yeah.
3.1 percent.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, obviously, the budget is predicated on, which, again, this is early in the process. We just, we just got our, you know, our DOR certification for '15 anyway, on values, and then that's your pace, and then you have your two and a half, and then you have new growth. So, it is very early, and it's about where we're at. I mean, we'll definitely, we'll be over a million. And then, again, just, I'd hope be able to continue our investments in town properties and facilities in FY16, and work with the, continue working with the capital advisory group to identify those priorities that we fund in '16 that may not necessarily be within the operating budget, but from potential free cash projects and, and the other opportunities. And again, it's a balanced approach to capital needs and personnel commitments, is important to strengthen this community. That's kind of my bulleted take in, in, for discussion.
Special, board, who's our liaison to FinCom? Don't tell me it's me.
Might be me.
I think it's David.
I think it's me.
I just think, I mean-
Just pretty sure.
Just the new members, a lot of, a lot of the detail happens in those meetings, so it's always good if we know they're happening, if we have interest to go and, you know, see the fire department present the details of their budget.
Yeah, again-
That's not going to happen in this meeting.
If you, if you take a look at my FY15 budget letter, a lot of that is laid out, kind of the background, the process, it would continue similarly for, this year, the major cost centers will present their budgets to FinCom after they've submitted their budgets into me. They'll present to, sometime, they usually arrange those, they, they've been doing them later than, than I would have expected, at least last year they did.
So, looking in January, February?
Probably, yeah, they did them in Feb, they actually did them after the Saturday, February meeting last year. They had department heads in, so after I presented the budget, they, they had them in. They might have done one before that, but it was later than it had been in prior years. But anticipate that, that will continue, that they'll have the, those big cost centers. I don't anticipate any change from the budget format as far as setup. We made the big change in '15 from '14, which was a bottom-line budget, and we've created '15's budget, which will carry into '16 with about eight or so cost centers that deal with public safety, general government, debt, benefits, those things, where each of those are actual. So, what that does, because it actually, it's a, it's a line approved for each of those entities that you can't spend outside of, outside of those approved lines. So, if it's public safety, it includes police and fire, that's their budget. You can't spend, you can't, without town meeting, you can't take money from there and pay for the town accountant's office, so that's kind of what that has. Prior budgets, the prior few budgets were a bottom-line budget, you know, X million, and, you know, it was managed accordingly from that point. The only other change, you know, there'll be some tweaks with some certain line items that will make up department budgets that I'm anticipating. I'm looking at, I talked about prior, looking at putting, consolidating some of the facility stuff with regards, not facility, but utility stuff within public property, some of the electric cost centers, some of that factor that hadn't been factored in prior years is the, is the electric utility savings that we're seeing from the solar park. And those numbers now, I have a solid number, I have a, I have a solid baseline to determine what our potential savings are there, so I can actually budget accordingly and cut those costs out of budgets. But I'd like to, in most cases, put it under a consolidated utility budget. And some other areas that we're looking at, trying to trim in, you know, these loose pockets of fat, potentially another area is within Town Hall, the individual budgets that have their own office supply budget, for instance, and looking at pooling some of those to centralized overseer, centralized, somewhat centralized purchasing. It's all over the place now, and it creates for a lot of, you know, not mismanagement of funds, but opportunity that, you know, shouldn't be there.
Are we still considering and having discussions with the school about the consolidation of custodial services?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's the primary meeting for tomorrow.
Alright.
Yeah. I don't know where this board's going to be with that. I don't know where the school committee's going to be at that. We're going to continue having discussions, and likely we'll push something forward. What'll come out of that, if that's the direction, would be a memorandum agreement, understanding between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, because there is statutory, you know, rights to school buildings that fall, actually, to the school principals as to building managers. But, and all that, that all is maintained accordingly, and to whatever level the principal wants to be involved. But it takes the budget in its entirety from them, and, you know, would move it under a public properties or facilities department and potential organizational layup, but-
Of course, I'd, I'd want to see the fiscal analysis of it, this is what-
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's a topic for, have your meeting, and then we'll talk about it.
No, that, that's something that I'm glad you brought up, that could very well be a potential change in this, you know, in this budget season, so.
Any other questions from the board about the budget message? We're all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Kevin.
Yes.
Move on to Agenda Item 9.
So, that will, just to clarify, that, that letter will get distributed to all department heads, boards, committees, commissions, Friday is actually November 15th, so I'll go out Friday the 15th.
I assume you will.
Right, per-
I assume you will share it with the superintendent tomorrow.
Uh, no.
You won't?
No.
Okay.
I'll share my ideas with him tomorrow.
Alright.
The letter, no, but, yeah, with the direction we're going in.
Just the idea, the direction.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. That, I mean, that, I don't know how we're going to get, cover all this in a two-hour meeting, but the budget is really our first conversation about '16's budget and his expectations that I'm hoping to put out there for '16. But of course, share where we think we're going, so.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
Alright. Agenda Item Number 9, Board of Selectmen Policy and Regulation Subcommittee Assignments. And the board established a subcommittee on policy and regulation a while ago, because we are backlog in our review of various policies that have been presented to us, including water and sewer regs, cemetery regs, naming of town property, this thing about the nuisance bylaw, and so we're hoping that rather than a primary meeting that can be taken care of by subcommittee, and they can report back to the primary group for recommendations and, and action. And these policies are all things, basically, that have been developed by, you know, town departments or something like that, and we've kicked them around a couple of times during the meeting, but we're just not quite there on a couple of little, little pieces of it.
Mr. Chick, I'll just jump in.
Yeah.
Just, so the two of you are aware, I know the chair mentioned that this board serves as the police commissioners, well, I don't know if you're not aware or not, the other entity is, the board also serves as the water sewer commissioners, as well as the cemetery commissioners, and that's where a lot of the policies are coming. So, that's why a lot of those particular items come before the board as well, as the legal licensing authority. Am I missing one? A lot of hats, so.
I think we should get badges.
I agree. Agent?
Acton used to give police badges to-
Really? Well, no, let's not do that.
Ed Davis over there.
So, the big picture here is that we need to assign three people to this committee, and the assignments are only for the current fiscal year, they don't, they're not lifelong assignments. But the point is also that it means other meetings outside of this standard tonight accepting Tuesday night meeting schedule.
But they are subject to the open meeting law, have to be posted, has to be-
Right, that's why we need three people, so we can have like a real quorum, and, you know, somebody has to be chair, and somebody has to do the minutes, and, you know, everybody can show up, of course, and participate, but we just need an organized structure so that the meetings can actually be held.
Did you have something to say?
And, so, simply because the backlog of issues are stuff that the three elderly selectmen members have been aware of, my suggestion would be that Jason, David, and I be on that subcommittee, but, like I say, I don't have strong feelings either way, and I actually haven't asked if they wanted to be on the committee either. But, uh, we have any volunteers for the committee? But, uh, we have any volunteers for the committee?
I'm fine with that, Bill. If the chair is asking for my participation, I would be happy to oblige to the chair's request.
All right, we got one volunteer.
Do you need a staff member for that? One more night?
I'm good. Chris or Tim, do you have any burning desire to be on a subcommittee? Not this one, I'm sure we can find you another one.
It's okay with me. Could be you on one. Wouldn't exclude myself.
You, you want to be officially on the committee or do you?
Certainly.
You want to just show up?
I can officially be on it. That's okay.
All right. That's fine. We need three people.
You want me to back away?
Uh, I don't know, I was wondering if I should, but it doesn't really matter. It's.
I'll back away. I'll come when I want to come.
Okay. That's fine.
The chair has the most duties.
We don't know who's the chair of the committee.
No, well, the chair in general.
Yeah.
Typically has less liaison assignments.
Uh, yeah, but. The chances are they're going to show up for half these anyways.
You have a lot of free evenings.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to appoint the following people to the Policy and Regulation Subcommittee for Fiscal 15. Jason Creel, myself, Bill Cranshaw, and Krista Silva.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? unanimous again. And so offline, we'll try to figure out a schedule for our first meeting, but it won't be this week. Agenda item number 10 is Economic Development Updates. And that's a new permanent addition to our agenda. And Kevin usually comes with all sorts of good news, but I've already pointed out that we got the theater open.
Yes.
Yay.
I'd like to pose for a picture we can put up so we can show that we're promoting the economic development of the committee.
They know. Actually, I'm kind of thinking it might have been the first purchase, actually, but.
It wasn't a donation.
Did they open tonight?
They did a soft opening tonight, yeah. Not an official one, but just to work at King Center. It's good.
Is that considered large or jumbo or?
I don't know, I just said three buckets.
It was intentional, Andrew.
It'd be a long movie to eat all that popcorn.
You're supposed to go three different movies. They got all the screens.
I don't know what's playing, but.
Interstellar.
Ah, okay.
Thirty-five millimeter format.
You haven't checked my blog or Facebook.
Got a C minus in the paper today.
All right, it's a special release. It doesn't open until Friday in digital. If you would play it thirty-five millimeter, they released it for tonight.
A premiere, wow.
I thought you'd be all over the Facebook message.
All right, so.
You can follow eye on me and not me. Anyway.
I didn't know you had one, I gotta find it.
No, we know. The Fine Arts Theater, thank you, open, soft opening tonight. They will be, tonight at seven thirty, had a showing. There's one showing tomorrow evening, same movie, same time, seven thirty. And the weekend, there are several showing scheduled various times through Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday is essentially their official hard opening. And they're planning with Chamber of Commerce, an actual ribbon cutting, official, more formal opening. But ultimately, they're opening, two cinemas out of the three will be open, operational, they'll run with those. They've been closed for, what, a year, I guess, maybe?
In lease?
Longer? Yeah, it's been too long. They've, you know, they've put a significant amount of investment and time in it. And exciting to have them reopen and it's a nice benefit for the community and for the downtown. With regards to the Economic Development Committee, I understand that they're working on a, finalizing the development of a website, some of their ongoing initiatives. Their Mass Development Initiative Grant, which presentation is being tentatively scheduled for November 19th at 7:00 PM before the Economic Development Committee. And the purpose of the grant is to identify and recommend the targeted infrastructure, aesthetic investments the town can make to create the most impact in the downtown. Analyze current market conditions to determine viability of downtown as a food, culture, entertainment destination. To lay a foundation, help guide future decision making. Consolidate common goals and strategies by existing stakeholder groups such as the Revitalized Mained Collaborative, Mained Business Alliance, Aspid Valley, Chamber of Commerce, Clock Tower Place, and the Cultural Council. And then measure the impact of the 129 Parker Street development on the downtown retail. Particularly, again, focus on the food, culture, entertainment aspects. That's being presented by Peg, do you remember her last name? Peg something. Peg. Again, that, that's tentatively scheduled for the evening of November 19th at 7:00 PM to formally present it to the Economic Development Committee. It's in this room, yeah.
Eric Barringer.
Eric Barringer.
Popcorn, you doing?
That's, and some of the efforts they've been doing, I mentioned last time we met, the tour the group went on, et cetera. Continue to monitor the Clock Tower Place status. Don't have anything to share this evening with the board publicly. But I do think in the next couple of months, certainly within the next month, we'll have some sort of definitive direction with what's going on at that property. And I suspect with shortly after that, because there is a considerable investment at hand that we'll, we'll see folks before the Board of Selectmen in a process that they'll be looking to do some revitalization down at the mill and some redevelopment there. But it's, it's still early and, but it is ongoing. What I will note on that is as far as the arrangement that I set up a year ago with payment on taxes and arrears, Clock Tower, is that agreement ends the end of this calendar year, ends in December. By the end of December, they will be 100% paid on all arrears as well as current. So all the arrears that they owed as well as the current, which is the first, the first approach anybody's really done in several years to actually get some real action out of them. And that, that money we'll, we'll see will be, is money that we've been floating and we haven't, hasn't had a drastic impact, but it's certainly, you know, when it's our largest taxpayer in town, that revenue is important. So we'll be in good shape there. And again, we don't know what the future, the mill down there at the project. But I'm hopeful with some discussions and anticipation of what potentially could, could be coming through some revitalization there. Hopefully, in the near future, we'll have some real concrete definitive act, you know, progress to report back to the board. Well, I think, just want to mention, I don't know how the board as a whole felt about the outfall of the town meeting votes. You know, whether you're for it or against it, whatever, what we're seeing is that we've been labeled as not business friendly by several individuals that have come in and expressed concern with the town meeting vote and the way it was played out. And it's the conversations on the street with some, some developers and the impact of that. You know, it is what it is, the two zoning articles field, but it's, it's a constant, you know, it's a constant thing that comes over the community that we, we need to get out of. And the stigma of the 129 Parker Street, you know, and concern is affecting significantly other good projects that could really have true benefit to the town. So just something to think about. I know this is our first meeting since that meeting. I don't know the board's overall reaction, but it, it certainly had an impact, you know, has an impact from outsiders looking in with, with the, the business aspect of the town.
My thoughts are not actually in regards to, you know, the good or bad about the proposals. My thoughts are in our failings in regards to presenting the issues. And it seems like, you know, the developers were waiting to be asked to present. And, you know, we were thinking Planning Board was going to do it and Planning Board was thinking we were going to do it. And that miscommunication just means it never happened. And that's really too bad. Goes to our Board of Selectmen goal of communication. I think we failed. I thought, I thought we had it lined up so that there would be a full discussion and it just didn't happen. So I think we'll have to have a conversation with Planning Board about how we avoid that issue.
Well, I think there's, there's some issues beyond just that aspect. And, you know, I don't think tonight's probably not the right time to get into the discussion, but the entire lead up and preparation of the article itself, rather than just the presentation of the article. And, you know, I attended Planning Board meetings, et cetera, and expressed my concerns that they did not have answers that were going to lead to a positive vote at town meeting. And this is happening repeatedly. So it's not business unfriendly. It's, mained residents are smart and mained residents are not going to vote for something that's not being properly explained to them. Or that they, they sense that something's being withheld, or that they sense that there's something that is, you know, when you get answers like, well, we, we have talked to them or something along those lines, that's not good enough. People need real, solid answers. And if we're not prepared, we have to be in a position where we're not afraid to say, you know what? And I said this at the last meeting when we had the planner here, whoa, slow this down. And how many times, you know, have we seen comments after the fact that, yeah, the process was rushed? There were social media comments from members of the Planning Board saying that they felt the process was rushed. And if they don't get the message that their job is to protect the town, not to help a developer, the town is not being well served. So we have to stand back. We have to have discussions with the Planning Board. We have to make sure everybody understands what their roles are so that we can be better prepared as a community to have these discussions and not just rush them through. If we do that, we'll be in a much better position. But we have to start planning properly and preparing properly for a town meeting.
Yeah, I guess I'm guilty when, you know, the article's sponsored by somebody else, I kind of assume they got it. But ultimately, they're our committee, so we have to make sure they're ready. We didn't really do that.
I'm just more interested moving forward and, and it set us back, so.
Be honest with you, Kevin, after five years on the Planning Board, this is not new that I've heard that we're not friendly to development. And I'll, I'll take that on the chin because I was on that board for five years. And, and quite frankly, in five years, we really haven't moved anything forward, other than Clock Tower Place, and that is floundering.
And I would point out that 129 Parker got majority vote. They just didn't get super majority vote.
But that doesn't move anything.
Well.
So, I mean, that's like saying, it's almost Christmas, but it's July 4th. It's not Christmas.
Yep, it also points out that the people who show up at town meeting make the decisions, so. Ten people showed up, it would have been different.
Uh, any questions on economic development stuff?
The meeting this week is canceled, if I saw correctly on the website.
Yeah, there was some issue with quorum attendance. A lot of people were asking to go to another meeting that's scheduled for tomorrow night.
See, it's the ZOV bylaw.
The demolition delay bylaw?
So Chris has rescheduled it for the.
All right, Wednesday. Wednesday.
Wednesday.
The 12th?
Yeah.
Which is.
It would, it should have been posted yesterday or today with the corrected date.
Which is also the same date as the Cultural Council.
But it's at 5:00 PM.
Oh, okay. Okay. Move on to TA updates?
Well, I mean, maybe as a segue or it's an economic development, we can talk about the Cultural Council public hearing Wednesday, the 12th.
Yeah, I had that on my TA updates, but I can start there. The cultural district hearing is on November 12th at 7:00 PM in this room. Invites went out last week to a lot of folks, a pretty large distribution. Two of the council members, Joyce Dwyer and Rhea Stevens, are picking up the pieces from the chair, Elizabeth Milligan, who stepped down and dropped a lot of the tasks that were supposed to be handled unexpectedly. So two of those folks are picking the pieces up and moving the hearing forward.
Kevin, what's the role of the Board of Selectmen at that hearing?
It's just an invited guest.
An invited guest. So the, the statutory language doesn't require the executive office of the town to, to be the one to hold the.
The hearing.
Technically, the Board of Selectmen have asked for the hearing.
So that meets the qualifications of the statute?
That's what the state is expecting, that there's sponsorship from the community, so it comes from the board.
Okay.
The Cultural Council is doing all the work.
Right, yeah.
The representative from the state will come here to answer questions. That was why it got scheduled when it did. We were trying to get her, her schedule. The board will be presented with a resolution that night, whether they're in attendance or not. That's the part of the process. And then at your next regularly scheduled US meeting, he'd be asked to vote to approve that.
Okay.
You serious?
A lot of public hearings are held at a Board of Selectmen meeting, so they just, they approve it that night, but.
Do they need to do the resolution that night? Are they required to?
They need to publicly say, we're going to get this resolution voted on.
All right, so you gotta, you gotta explain to me who the partner is. Who's the partner doing all the legwork and all the monitoring, all the field work that's required to maintain and sustain this initiative? Who's that, who's that partner?
Need to get answered at the meeting.
So I don't really understand how a committee can prepare a resolution after a discussion at a hearing. Don't they need time to deliberate?
Spoiler plate for this, it's come from the state that we're going to support the district. We may not choose to, but we're collectively partnering with a number of organizations in the community to do that legwork under the guidance of the Cultural Council. Since Ms. Milligan's resignation, I'm concerned about our ability to carry forward. She's been the driving force behind it. I'm meeting with Joyce Dwyer and Rhea Stevens tomorrow afternoon to see where we can go and how far we can go with it.
Does the board have to act on a timeline for that resolution? Because I'm concerned that if we had to act immediately, there might not be enough information to be assured that we should support it.
Sure. I don't know if there's a deadline, like from the public hearing to acting on it. But until it's acted on, the application for the designation can't move forward.
I think it's just at a future, at a future meeting.
Yeah.
It only stipulates the next regularly scheduled meeting or anything like that.
No, our intention was to bring it forth on the 18th though, because as I said earlier, a lot of times they just do these at Board of Selectmen meetings and it's just one process. But the meeting's probably going to be forty minutes to an hour or so. If we did that here, it would extend us into the.
Oh, certainly, but, no, I'm going to say, it's just, I don't know. My caution flies go up when a single person is no longer around and the whole thing derails. The decision to do this and to spend time, effort, and money to maintain it is a forever decision. If we're doing it based on a single personality, that's not a good call.
Yeah, that's why I want to see what Ms. Dwyer and Stevens have to say, because I haven't been involved in the Cultural Council, other than through Ms. Milligan. And I don't know how invested the rest of the group is.
Yeah, okay.
We'll talk, the Shine Program will be at the mained golf course. It's for the seniors, sixty-five and over, the insurance program. Mentioned to continue to move with those, having the Shine Program available to seniors. That'll be on this Thursday. Again, at the golf course. With the golf course itself, we've started to work on the RFP. We've circulated the existing contract and started to work on language of the RFP. We're going to, obviously, Town Council at some point will be involved. I think we've engaged with Mark Grunstrom, the chair of the reuse committee. Certainly will, you know, pass it along. Certainly will, you know, pass it along. This might be an area, you know, that particular board members may have an interest in and provide input into. Were you thinking anybody else to circulate that through?
There's been a number of people who have offered suggestions already. I'll certainly be sending it back out to them to see if I captured some of the information accurately. Any feedback is welcome. I think it's three years of, of experience. And I think the contract we're writing for the next term should be very different than the original contract, because we know things we didn't know before. We don't have to change it just to change it, but we will change it to make it stronger. But, you know, we'll need a lot of input for that. There's a lot of information out there. Trying to put it through a very small funnel.
So we are actively working on, on that. As you know, their existing agreement expires December 31st with the town. Boston Globe.
I want, just one question in regards to the golf thing. If the, if the existing contract expires December 31st and they're not, it's not complete, and they have functions and everything scheduled beyond that, what happens to those things? Who, you know, I mean, they have, they have a lot of events scheduled for January and February already. And if the, if the contract is in limbo, you know, there's no, there's no one party to it, what happens?
Yeah, I reached out to legal counsel this afternoon, actually, on the very topic. The original contract was signed, I believe, on the 12th of April, 2012. Legally, we can write a contract for up to three years under the old rules that we changed last Monday night. But this one was written under those rules. It says in the contract that it expires December 31st. That's what's been driving us to move forward with this RFP as quickly as we can. But legal counsel did tell us that we have wiggle room, because the contract says the town can extend it. It's prerogative, something like that, which it couldn't do beyond the three years. But from December 31st to April 12th, we have some wiggle room. I suspect we'll have an RFP on the street and proposals in. Let's say we award it to a new company. We may not be able to get them fully vetted and onboard by January 1st. So we may need a few weeks of transition time. But we're not dead in the water if we don't have it done by New Year's.
Does Sterling, does Sterling hold the legal license or does the town?
That's another issue that I've been dealing with.
Although it's, it's a club license, so it doesn't really matter. We got a million club licenses, so.
Well, they, well, they're going up for renewal, of course. So I believe that we can put the language in the contract to restrict their ability to sell.
The club license has no value.
So they couldn't walk.
Not have a quota on that, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, are they one that's under that?
Yeah.
There's a few that should be clubs, that should be under there that are.
Yeah, the.
That one's one of them.
No, we, we looked it up for their club, so it's.
American Legion does not have a club license.
I wasn't aware that it was a club license, but now that you mention it, it does sound familiar. But the, that was something we were trying to figure out in the contract, is how do we protect ourselves from, predictably, there'll be transition. We, we may re-award to Sterling at this point through this process, but someday, there'll be some other company there, presumably.
Yeah, I mean, it, I could see herself extending it for, you know, by, by a, just an extension letter for like another sixty days while we were through the process. Similar to what we did when we went out to bid for the wastewater treatment plant with our current operator. I just kind of, there's provisions in there that allow for it. And I just wrote a letter saying, under the, under the existing terms, and we're extending it for an additional sixty days effective X. So there, it does allow for that, 'cause there is, you're right, there is events that are scheduled in January and February. And there's kind of this little limbo period between potentially what could be a new operator, too, so.
To give you a quick example of the type of thing that's changing in this contract, the operator is required to pay for all their permitting fees. In November, December timeframe is the annual re-permany process of food, entertainment license, those sort of things. They get no benefit of it if the contract extends, if it's not awarded to them. Because it's, their renewals are for next year. So essentially, they pay for a fourth year of permitting that they don't get any benefit from. So in the new contract, we're writing in language that the, you know, the management company awarded reimburses the former company for any prorated amount of fees. So just little things like that that we didn't have to worry about the first time around. But we're now trying to anticipate all those little things.
Thanks. Boston Sunday Globe is doing a address profile on Maynard. Couple of, it's shared with the board, some factual things that started with numbers that they've reached out and were looking for. They're gonna be running that Sunday, actually, this Sunday, November 9th, I think, right? Yeah, November 9th.
This Sunday.
Yeah. So you'll see that in there, I shared. I don't know, I don't know what other groups or people in town may have also provided additional information. It seemed like she was gathering quite a bit of, reaching out to several groups, including the superintendent and others. So be a nice little piece highlighting Maynard and some kind of unique number facts about the community. That'll be on, in the November 9th issue. The town purchased and now has in possession, through the police department, a grant, a new digital signboard that you'll start to see around town. It's a, it's a blue digital LED signboard, typical type of highway one you see. It's actually the exact same one, if anybody's noticed, at Stowe, right before Stowe Town Hall, that little.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Grass area that they put up. They had it up recent, most recently for the apple picking events and stuff like that, that they had posted. But it allows for three lines with delayed messaging, which you can set the time, but I think up to nine different delayed messages. You can certainly create quite a few accidents, depending on how tricky you get with that. But it's, it's exciting, because Maynard's never owned one and has never had one. It's an opportunity to further communication and move accordingly through the community and get different events out there and solar-powered and you name it. But a nice, a nice addition to the community, about twenty grand that didn't come out of town money. We still gotta figure out a process on how that is gonna play out as far as a policy on who's gonna, not necessarily who's gonna put the message up, but who we're going to allow to provide messages and what controls, you know, certainly town events taking precedence over other type of messages. But trying to control that, too, not just like Thursday, Turkey Day or something, you know.
Kevin, how is that purchased? Through what, through a grant?
Yeah, through the police department, part of a telecommunications grant that we had. And something we've been talking about, I've been talking about for a year and a half. We just finally have gotten to that point. It's capable of programming remote off-site, so we could, in the event of an emergency, if you had it out, you could update, you could update remote from the Emergency Operations Center, remote right into the board, as well as it has a keypad that locks inside the unit. We can program right from the unit itself. But we do have the ability to also real-time, quick message update changes directly remote from, to the board as well, so.
Any idea how it's powered?
Solar. Yeah, it's solar-powered and it's got, the, the most expensive piece on it is the actual individual panels. There's nine of them. And then the batteries, too. The other piece you gotta be concerned about is locking, it says two locking mechanisms. One is the one where the actual computer piece is. The back part of it is the actual batteries. I think there's six of them in there. Those have been known to go missing.
And the only other question I have is, how is it transported?
It's extremely lightweight. All of our SUVs have the ability to pull them. They have a trailer hitch on the SUVs, as well as DPW, too. But it's, it's very lightweight. I mean, you can, you could move it around manually, but the police department can move it around town with, with the SUV or we could have DPW pull it.
Right.
So, yeah.
I suggest while you're mulling over policy usage, you think about the static signs as well.
Yeah.
Same difference.
Yeah, that.
Same priorities.
Yeah, and that's usually battling on who's gonna change it, like at the fire department, but it's all another issue. But, yeah, I agree. It's another hat for Andrew, charge of sign messages.
So once he doesn't have to cancel on aging anymore.
Yeah, really, he's got a whole day.
He'll have a good twenty hours a week back.
Uh, let's see, the last item, well, last two items I have is the, for those that were noticed, didn't affect anybody, residents, none of you.
It was close.
You were close, but didn't go that far. The water main break on Main Street right here that affected from 170, 180 Main up to Stowe and then, and then Mill Street, a couple of other. I think they ended up getting that, that repaired. It was back online, waterworking by 5:30 last night. It had to happen, you know, early morning. And they had to shut the water off to all of those locations. And we're waiting on parts and repairs and I think it's something to do with support underneath. Something wasn't there, it was usually, it had kind of bowed and given way. The old one and the new picture look cool. Beyond that, I can't really explain it. But it clearly was repaired. You can see the new changes and this way. But we, we've had a stint of, of breaks through, throughout the town over the last several months. And, you know, it's due to a variety of things, you know, aging infrastructure and some other stuff. So it's, it's something that we're really looking at and dealing with. But they, they got it resolved yesterday. I don't know if anybody saw it.
I did.
You did?
I, I was there early, I went by early in the morning and it was, they had the lights on.
Yeah.
Yeah, they started out on Sunday night, so.
You're right. And the only other thing I just wanna mention, not really for any discussion purposes, but it's a good opportunity to certainly remind the two new board members, and I'm not sure if Jason was ever even given it, the statement of roles and responsibilities I put in your drop, actually, I emailed it out to the board as well, but it's in the Dropbox, just to kind of remind everyone what, you know, Board of Selectmen's roles are. Certainly for our new guys, what the roles and expectations, responsibilities, the interaction as a, as an individual, as a member of the board, with department staff, et cetera. So if you have any questions with that, let me know. Just a.
Once again, stepping on the chair report, but okay.
What's that?
Once again, stepping on the chair report, but okay.
Oh.
You didn't share your report.
You're up.
Communication, Bill.
All right, I'm up.
You're up. I sent, I sent it out, so I assumed it was on my report.
All right, so Chairman's Report. And I have a few things. Rule number one, Dropbox is communal. Don't delete anything, 'cause you'll delete it for everybody forever. We have a bunch of events coming up, which generally end up with some sort of Board of Selectmen presence. Well, just an informational event, we talked about the demolition bylaw advocacy presentation is tomorrow at the library, I guess, in the evening. There's no participation from the board, the board's invited to learn. There's a ribbon cutting for the official opening of the auto parts store on Friday. And I believe Kevin is attending that.
I will be, yeah. Actually, Andrew and Phil Nemzner, the town planner, I'll be there.
I'll be there.
You gonna, oh, cool.
I got Jason there, too.
Jason there, too, so.
Tamara and Chris are wandering by, need something to do for, get a free lunch. You should stop by.
Free lunch? Where'd that come from?
Oh, well, sorry.
I think it's donuts, but.
Right. Close enough. Lunch in some world. We have Veterans Day on the 11th, and I'm not gonna be in town that day. So David is covering for the board and doing something.
Yes.
He's figuring out what it is, but he'll be covering that. But of course, everybody is welcome to participate in the, in the march. On November 13th, there's the proclamation at the Boys and Girls Club regarding the Youth of the Year that we did. And we're looking for somebody to present that proclamation at that event.
What night of the week is that?
It's a Thursday.
Thursday, the 13th.
What time?
6:00 P.M.
In Neshadak.
Oh, it's in Neshadak?
No.
Is it, really?
Yeah. Bill and I were at last year's.
Did you go the whole time?
I've gone once, it's very nice.
I can, I can do it. I used to be on that board.
Yeah, Bill and I were at last year's, they had it in Stowe.
I opened it when it opened.
All right. So Chris just volunteered, so.
Do you know the youth?
Do I know the youth? I'm sure I know, I'm sure.
You know now, here it is.
Now what are we gonna just give it to?
That's the, that's the award.
You make a speech.
Black.
Make a speech, okay.
Tell him how wonderful.
And we've named a day after him. And it gets him absolutely nothing.
My daughter was, my daughter was the Youth of the Year one year. She got all the stuff at home.
Oh, excellent, perfect.
You know how it goes.
Becky has all this.
Guess we got a pro here.
Retreads the speech of the person who spoke with your daughters.
I'll have, I'll have Becky email you, his background.
I think it was, I think it was the business partner of the Year one year, the Boys and Girls.
Who you going?
And then, the next event in November is.
13th.
The Chamber Coffee Connection thing with Maynard Town Management on Friday morning, November 21st. You guys are there, I guess, you guys are the stars. But from 7:30 to 9:00 A.M., and I'm sure you can get free coffee, David, if you show up, so. Maybe even get some popcorn.
Maybe the same popcorn.
Then on the 29th, Saturday, the 29th, is the Eagle Honor Court. And there's gonna be three, or four.
Four.
Awards that time. And I've done a couple of those, those are pretty.
Yeah, they're impressive.
Pretty impressive to do.
Yeah.
So I'd be happy to do it, but if somebody else wants to do it, I highly recommend it. It's, it's pretty fun. Makes me feel guilty I wasn't an Eagles guy. And then we have Saturday, December 6th, is the Sip and Stroll Event in downtown. I got that covered.
That's the Christmas lights, right?
That's the Christmas lights thing. And I got like two lines I get to say.
It's the lighting.
That's about it. And then the Christmas Parade on the 7th. Get out your marching shoes for that. We'll try to get a good position, not behind a horse.
Not behind a.
Behind the horses.
Or behind a gas-blowing-out.
But you never know.
Vehicle.
Take what you get. So those are events to, to enjoy. But that's our calendar for the, the near term. Let's see here. Yeah, just to build on Kevin's comments about the, I'm not gonna use the word, the expectations of the board members. The big picture thing is, you know, Charter says that the board members act as a whole and not as an individual. One thing to keep in mind is how much time of Kevin's we chew up. He actually has other things to do than tell five different selectmen the same thing. But, so be very cautious in how much time you take of his. In regards to one-on-one interaction with other town employees, I would keep in mind, my, my consideration there is individual, but members of Board of Selectmen do not have authorization to spend town money. So if it's an hourly employee, you're spending town money and you shouldn't be doing that without going through Kevin first. But just be cautious about how you act. If you're acting on, as a selectman, you really should be acting with the concurrence of the Board of Selectmen. But Kevin, Kevin is the screener on that stuff. I mean, if you have a need to talk to a department head or probably a department head, there really shouldn't be a need to talk to anybody below that. You really need to go through Kevin. And if he says no, then ask me. But if you ask me first, I'm just gonna say, check with Kevin, so. Better go with him. Let's see, we got here, uh.
You don't like what Dad says? Ask your mama?
At the next meeting, we got a few things. Uh, we have the tax hearing coming up, everybody's favorite. And actually, I'm curious if anybody's thought of anything special they want presented. Like, there's a couple of things I'd like to see. One being, I want to make sure that they do what they did last year and they had some detailed information on the small commercial pro- properties. Because those guys kind of get lost in the big discussion of the commercial tax rate. And then the, another thing I'd like to see is, a succinct conversation of the difference between tax rate and tax bill, because you know, in my mind, too many people focus on the rate and not the bill. And, you know, yeah, we're, you know, number nine on one and number sixty on the other, but to me, it's the check the taxpayer's right that's important. So a little discussion to clarify the difference between rate and the bill. And then the, uh, other thing I, actually I'd like to see them prepare is, um, I'd like to have them run a set of numbers just to make sure that to play the what-if, if we were to adjust our assumptions on local receipts by a quarter million dollars, what difference that would make, because we've had some big free cash numbers the past few years, and a piece of that has been money returned from the budget, and other pieces have been, you know, we underestimate local receipts every year, and I think this year we got a chance to probably have the lowest tax increase in ten years. So, I just would like to explore the options. And it's really just kind of a few clicks on the spreadsheet analysis, but be good to have that on hand. Regardless, I think we're gonna have a pretty, as far as tax hearings go, I think the numbers are gonna be as good as they can be. But, I don't know, anybody else need anything specific they're gonna want to see at the tax hearing?
No. Are we anticipating that the assessors will have a presentation prepared before that meeting for our review, or are they going to be coming in?
He'll have it Friday.
Will have it Friday?
Friday too.
Okay. There have been years
Yeah.
where we get it as they walk in.
Yeah, no, he'll have it, um, Friday, prior to the meeting at the latest. Possibly Thursday, but.
Do they have a meeting scheduled sometime around that?
Meeting's on the tenth, six P M.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
They already, I mean, they've already.
Will the new values, will the new values be up before that meeting?
Uh, don't know. I don't know, should I have those?
Okay. Because they aren't, then we should probably just get them a Dropbox or something.
Yeah. Okay.
Also, at the next meeting, um, we'll be getting to, uh, discuss whether we want to give, uh, free parking for the holiday season. So let's, uh, prepare for the tax hearing.
We should have done that with the parking ban.
Well, I didn't want to do the, the no and then the yes on the same day.
I understand.
Move a little closer. Yeah, Kevin, one thing you don't know, I'm gonna ask that, um, that, uh, we have a, uh, report card on our goals to date for the year. The Board of Selectmen have three goals, seniors, economic development, and, uh, communication. And, you know, let's see what we got for good and bad. Or preferably just good, but.
You asking Kevin to do the grading?
Sure, why not? I don't know, just present it, just so we keep track of it. It's been four months. Let's see how we're doing. And, um, let's see, what else are little things for, uh, next week? Um, oh, yes. For the new people now that you, uh, join the Board of Selectmen as volunteers, I want to point out that you get to pay for the privilege of volunteering, because next week we'll be collecting for Beacon Santa donations, so bring your wallets. And then, um, lastly, a, um, logistical thing for the meeting, for agenda stuff, if you guys want something on the agenda, uh, let me know. And, uh, I can work it in. It might not be able to work in for the meeting, next meeting, but, you know, we'll get it in as quickly as we can, but I won't do that unless you ask, so.
Okay.
Let me know, that's fine. Other than that, I got a couple, a couple of generic questions about, uh, correspondence, but I'll save that to my, uh, say in the old new business.
These future agenda items, uh, Bill, if I could just add to that, is in the next, at some point, we'll have to have, uh, the police chief back for some sergeant promotional appointments, as well as lieutenant is retiring. Uh, Lieutenant Dawson's retiring, there'll be an appointment for that. We've had five, five police officers, uh, take the promotional exam for sergeant, and all five have passed. We've had three take the, uh, three sergeants take the lieutenant's, uh, promotional exam, um, and the three of them have passed. Next week, um, is a actual assessment. It's an all-day assessment. It's part of the Assessment Center. They come out and do the full assessment, um, on, uh, off of the, you know, the book exam. It's, it's how you actually react in different scenarios, and that's all graded. Um, and I think they might even have an oral piece in there, but the end of it kind of compounds sort of a final grade, um, as to where you stand. So we'll be seeing that recommendation, um, from that whole process come out, and, uh, we do have two sergeant appointments and one lieutenant appointment.
That, um, sort of segues, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, speak about a topic that I wanted to bring up under my old new business commentary. Because tonight was the first time we've seen this process with hiring of a new police officer under, um, you know, outside of civil service. I was somewhat surprised that, um, the process was done, uh, you know, where we had, we had one candidate, and, um, I don't know if, you know, as police commissioners, should that be the process, that we're presented with one candidate and basically the process, we have, you know, this or nothing. So I don't know if we should have a future agenda item where we discuss how we want to, uh, utilize our authority as police commissioners in the hiring and, uh, of police officers. We never had that discussion about how that fits into the, because it seems to, it seems to me tonight, you know, the, the police department chose their candidate. And yes, it's great that they gave us a recommendation, but I don't know if that's necessarily how the process should work, and I don't know if we had that discussion. And I don't know what your thoughts are on it.
Yeah, I mean, at that, at that, at that level, I trust, uh, I mean, all it would be is a couple of language changes in the charter, it'd be similar to the, the fire department, the fire chief, strong chief law. I, I trust the process that played out. I certainly was involved with the full, um, process for hiring, how that, you know, what, um, what provisions were in place for hiring. Uh, Andrew and I discussed that at length, even, uh, in the contract negotiations pieces, um, it was a extensive process, um, you know, they could have presented a, a couple of candidates, um, perhaps, but, uh, you know, for, for that role, but, uh, you know, again, I.
I don't want to give the impression that I don't trust the chief's and, and his team's, um, you know, decision-making process and, and how they came to this, but I'm wondering if we are extending authority beyond what the board's role actually should be to extend authority. I mean, the Board of Selectmen is supposed to be the hiring authority for police officers, and that's the question. Were we really the hiring authority in this instance, or was it just, uh, you know, yeah, we had the final say, but.
We were the appointing authority.
We were the appointing authority.
The hiring process was done.
Yeah, language, but I don't know what the other board members think, but, you know.
I mean, yeah.
If everybody's okay with it, and that's gonna be the policy going forward, so be it, but I think we have to have that discussion.
Yeah, and just to that point, I mean, the process is very similar, just as I said, just with the, the fire department. It's sim- very similar with that process, how that, um, hiring process goes with, uh, the, the, the only difference is you just don't see it. Um, because the chief, uh, has a strong chief law that allows him to appoint firefighters and captains. But, uh, again, I did, I do trust the process and, uh, the recommendation, but, you know, take the board's, uh.
How's it gonna work for the, um, sergeants and lieutenant stuff? Is that a interview of several and pick one?
Yeah, um, that's how I would anticipate. I don't know how many, I, I gotta talk to him. I don't know how many.
We interview several and pick one, or that the chief will come with, here's my candidate?
Well, I think it's, it's open. I think he plans on having, uh, a, a couple of ten, but certainly will have a recommendation. You know, I mean, um, you know, of his, you know, his, his vision of the department, you know, and the officers, so. You know, it has to be somebody, particularly on the chief, on the lieutenant level, that, somebody that he can trust and work with, um, which is very difficult in a half-hour, um, interview with, you know, with you, um, to determine, you know, who's the best candidate he's gonna be able to work with as a chief. But, yeah, it's just the way the pro- the, uh, the process is designed. You tell me. I mean.
Well, that's why I brought it up.
Well, I mean, it, we should probably mull it over a little bit, and, uh, we can figure it out next week, but, or next meeting, but especially with.
Yeah, I just want to.
They don't want him to have to jump in right away.
Yeah, I mean, again, the Assessment Center and the exam, and basically it's just gonna, it, it'll give a rating of, you know, with the lieutenants, you'll have three, with the sergeants, you'll have five, and it factors in where they scored on the written exam, orals, and the full day assessment, um, into, into a full evaluation.
Regardless, my general impression is it's way better than the old system where some of the candidates were not my favorites.
Well, we would, we would often get candidates that were toss-offs from other departments, because they were at the top of the list, here they came. And we, you know, that was the original process that we would see.
Yeah, I think if you don't see some of the candidates, uh, take a look at folks, you know, the promotional exams, you're gonna, those candidates that felt slighted, that didn't have an opportunity before the board, is gonna have much more of a, uh, you know, pushback. Back to, from a political standpoint. Back to the board as far as not having an opportunity before the appointing authority, but.
Uh, you know, I guess my, my thought is, I just would have thought we would have had this discussion before the first candidate came before us, that we would have understood what the process was going forward.
Yeah.
And we didn't have that discussion, so.
Alright, so let's figure it out before the second one. We'll figure it out next meeting. One way or another.
Fair enough.
That's good. Um, so, somebody has jumped into old new business. You want to continue, David?
I, sure.
Well, actually, just let me explain for the new guys, old new business is, um, where we just go around the horn, as the old saying was, and, uh, you bring up whatever you want, um, but, uh, don't expect that some new policy will be established in five minutes, but you feel free to bring up whatever you wish, so, uh, we're leaving off.
Do you want me to start, or you want, you want to go further down? Go ahead.
You're already rolling.
I wanted, okay, um, the first one was really just, um, I wanted to express my condolences to the school community and the community at large on the loss of, uh, David Hurley, one of our employees. I happen to be very friendly with David's family and have been for years, and, um, his loss was tragic and, um, Sunday night, I happened to go to his wake in Concord, and, um, I got there at six o'clock, and the line was around the corner. The outpouring of love and support for his family and for him was enormous. And, um, it was a remarkable showing of, you know, of how much he meant to so many. Uh, so with that, uh, you know, my sympathy to his family. Last week, or last meeting when we sat here, um, planner, the planner, uh, gave us some numbers from the school department, relative to his thoughts on the way the planning board is moving forward and, and whatever. Yet, at town meeting, I think we heard a different tone from a member of the school committee relative to numbers at the schools. So, you know, we talked earlier about, uh, why things might not pass and why the message and whatever. So what I would like to do is to actually ask the schools for some detailed information relative to their, uh, student population and their future and what they see. Share that with our planning board, so that the planning board has information that is real and that is documented. And it should come from the school committee, and it should be accurate information that we can use to, to plan. So that if we're talking about fifty apartments, we know, can we afford to bring fifty apartments to Maynard? If we're talking about two hundred and fifty apartments, can we afford to bring two hundred and fifty apartments to Maynard? Based on what I've heard over the last three weeks, I don't know if we know. So, what I'd like to do is to be able to ask the schools for that information, share it with us, and then we can begin the discussion and really start the planning process the way I think it's supposed to be done. Relative to, uh, understanding our community and, and the impacts that it might have on, on the, the, the schools. I just throw that out there, and I would like to ask the schools for that information, so that they can, not from the superintendent, but from the school committee, because apparently the information that we got from the planner came from the, from the superintendent, yet a member of the school committee who had been the chair for the previous three years stood up and said something completely different.
Well, yeah, well, she was present at a public meeting that, that the analysis was provided, so I don't know where that was coming from.
Well, again, uh.
So the superintendent has done an analysis, has presented it to the school committee. I haven't seen anything formal from the school committee come down, but we've been asking for that for a year and, and have most recently gotten, um, something, and, and I'm almost positive that she was at that public meeting, that's what I'm told.
We talked earlier about why things might fail. And why things might fail, and talked about being business unfriendly, and talked about whatever. Well, when you hear a member of the school committee, what's the resident, what are the residents supposed to say? And then, previous meeting, at a public meeting, we hear something completely different. So we need to have solid numbers, and we need to be satisfied that the information that is being presented is true, so that we can work with real numbers, and that's my point, and I want to get that. I'm saying this in a positive light, because I think we need to work to move forward, and in order to do that, we, everybody needs to be on the same page.
We've been hearing the same from members of the Economic Development Committee, and, uh, Jack McKean asked that we create data sets. We've begun that work, and that was part of how we got those numbers from the superintendent. But I think, uh, a lot of us wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying.
Thank you.
I mean, you think the school committee is planning on blessing those numbers, because it really needs to come from them.
It was presented to them.
Yeah, I don't think they have any choice. The numbers are not made up. They're just raw data. If you look at the detail, I, I don't know how much information Bill presented, and how much detail you received, but you look at the numbers, they're just numbers.
It's her quote.
Number of classrooms, there's a certain number of students per classroom. Increase that by one student, it equals as many students at a certain point.
Oh, I guess I'm missing the discussion. I thought we were talking about, you know, projections and things like that.
Yeah.
When the schools were built, I know there was projections. I can see the Coleman slides on the screen, um, how he presented, you know, twenty years' worth of projections as to why it was built this big, and
That's right.
I kind of wonder where those numbers have disappeared to. Same place as the Coolers School of Reuse in Rhode Island.
We, we asked Mr. Coleman to give us his birth rate analysis data. I still haven't seen that yet, but we'll marry the two together and see for how long this substantial capacity numbers would last if the birth rate increases. But there's no doubt there's capacity in the school. There's nine empty classrooms in Rhode Island. You can't deny that there's capacity.
Yeah, uh, let me just add, David, that this was, to Kevin's point, the, the town administrator's office has been asking for this. Former selectman Chapman and I asked for this same thing and gave Superintendent Girardi some guidance, as far as ju- just to what Andrew just mentioned. You know, we know that they were wrestling with a developer that kept changing a plan, and finally, we came to the conclusion of don't worry about what they're offering us. Figure out what you can, what you can take. What, what, how many students can you take to fill the classrooms? How many generate, how many more students before another teacher? How many more students before another classroom? Tell us what you can accommodate, not, you know, don't keep trying to figure out what their system's gonna bring us. Figure out what you can do. Figure out your capacity. And to my conversation with Kevin, this is news to me that it's even gotten that far. I, I was under the impression that it was well-received by the superintendent, that recommendation, but I'd. but I'd still never seen any data, and I was, quite frankly, very surprised to have someone stand up and say that we don't have any capacity for students when, as far as I know, none of that data's ever been reported.
Can I be permitted to make a comment?
About the current topic?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Now, to me, what we have to do, what I recommend they do, is the Board of Selectmen, as the Board of Selectmen in the town, writes a physical letter to the school committee to request the information. All this talking is wonderful, but the reason things don't pass is because nobody's making a commitment. So, it's pretty simple, in my mind, to write a letter to the school committee asking your question or questions, and they answer it or they don't answer it. Because talking with the superintendent, sitting in meetings, that's all wonderful, but no one's making a commitment. So, if at some point, they're, they're not willing to make a commitment, then that's our planning problem. Because if they give out a number and it turns out to be wrong, someone has to be accountable, and they need to do that. The superintendent comes and they go. He's not elected. The school committee's elected. These are the two official bodies that run 100% of the town. So, my thinking is, it's pretty simple. Write a letter saying we need this data. I get the answer, you can hand it to the planning board wherever you want.
Fair thing.
Hey, Jason, did, do you have a written request that, when you talked to the super way back?
No, it was made to the full board.
So, it wasn't written?
It was not a written, it was not a written request. To the complete, to the full school committee. And I couldn't, I can't speak to what's been requested from the town administrator's office.
Okay.
And...
I mean, to Ron's point and to Jason's, Jason's point, how do, how do, does Jason as a selectman, Andrew and Kevin as town administrators, how do you make a request of any department in the town and know how to respond to in an appropriate timeframe? Like, how does that hap, like, I'm, like, how does that happen? Like, in business, if I'm, I mean, if we're in business, this is the governing body, or this is the, this is the boss. How does the boss ask for something and not get it in an appropriate timeframe without there being some sort of, some sort of penalty or repercussion?
To be fair to the superintendent, I don't know when he was, this information was requested by others, but I asked him for the information in August. He promised it to me. School was opening. I reminded him. I got it at some point, late September, early October. I spoke to him about a month ago and said, are you comfortable sharing this data in public? Some of it, particularly the higher numbers, I think would be pretty controversial to say, we have this much capacity. The low numbers, you can see pretty plainly. He said, absolutely. This information is already presented to the school board. I stand behind it. The town planner and I asked him if he would present to the planning board in the near future, because we didn't feel comfortable presenting the data of theirs. We felt it would have more substance if it came directly from the schools. And he's agreed to do that. We haven't got it scheduled yet, but that's a calendar issue, not a lack of willingness. So, I don't know that he hasn't been responsive. I don't know how long it took him to gather the data from when he was first asked, but from my standpoint, he gave it to me relatively properly when asked, and is willing to stand behind the numbers.
But the school committee needs to do that.
Yeah, they have.
If you're going to...
Bill Coleman will stand behind it as well.
The school committee needs to vote.
If you're going to, if you're going to use it to make a decision and use it in town, in town meeting and ask us as citizens to make a decision, how is it not, I mean, I, it doesn't work that way, in my mind. Logically, it doesn't work that way. The scheduling of it doesn't work that way. You can tell me that, that that's the way the scheduling falls, and I'll, I'll abide by what you tell me, and I'll agree with it, and I won't argue with you, but that can't be. If you're, if you're the planning, if you're Jason, and you're folks who are on the planning board, and you're gonna make a presentation, I mean, you saw what the results of the presentation were. It, it was, you know, people just chewing it up, and guess what? Those are the ones that didn't make it. I don't know how, I don't know how that wor, you know, how it works.
And Chris, that goes exactly to my point earlier about the preparation, that it's not Maynard being business unfriendly. It's Maynard being ill-prepared. And it happens repeatedly, most especially on these zoning articles where we don't have the proper preparation.
I'd like to take a small hit here on the Acton Street zoning situation. In an attempt to be business friendly, I encouraged our new planner to make sure that we got this thing into the fall town meeting. And even when it was first presented to us, we knew the timeline was very tight. But the developer wanted to build in the spring, and we knew it had to go to town meeting. So, not going to town meeting until next May was gonna be business unfriendly. As it turned out, the timeline was too tight. We weren't able to educate the population as to the pros and cons of that particular project in a timely way. Bill has since changed the deadlines for all planning and development, giving his department two extra weeks, badly needed when you have to post things for 14 days and get things onto calendars for planning board meetings that are twice a month and so on. Because once the clocks start ticking, they're supposed to issue judgments within 30 days. There's all sorts of conflicting deadlines in there. So, he's extended out that process. If that process were already in place, the Acton Street project never would have come to town meeting in the fall, because it never would have been able to make the deadline. It came to us too late in the game.
And, yeah, but...
In that sense, I'll take some responsibility for sort of trying to push it through and, and as quickly as we could. But I agree with you 100%. We don't share the information we have. We don't believe the information when we share it. Everyone doubts everything that's said by somebody else in the town. We have to do a better job communicating the information and standing behind it.
And this is, this is positive stuff, because this, people are coming to the realization, because this is not the first time this has happened, and that's why Maynard has the reputation of being business unfriendly. Not because the voters don't like business. It's because we're ill-prepared, and we rush things through, and we put something that comes up to us to the top of the list, even though it shouldn't be at the top of the list, because of time, because, oh, you know, town meeting's coming up next week, let's get it to the top of the list. We can't do that anymore. Let's learn our lesson. And I think we should have learned our lesson a year and a half ago. We didn't. And we continue to fumble the same way we did before, and that's, you know, that's my feeling on that.
All right.
So, we'll move on.
For the topic at hand of the school numbers, I'll take it upon myself, since we don't have a current school committee liaison, that...
Jason.
I'm your liaison.
Jason, you with?
Yeah, I thought it was Brad. And we're, you know, I took it when he left.
Oh, you picked it up? All right, fine.
We're reading...
Next week, 12th.
Next week, the 12th. They have a meeting, we're meeting the 12th, and then they have a meeting 13th.
Yeah, I'm meeting with the superintendent tomorrow. We have a leadership meeting with Jason, myself, and the superintendent and the chair, Bill Coleman, on the 12th.
All right, but the one topic we're gonna talk about is, those numbers, we expect them to come from school committee, under school committee's signature. So, just coordinate to make sure that happens before the numbers are dispersed publicly, because we need more than verbal buy-in.
Can I move on, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
The next topic is related somewhat, but I think it's, it's also showing that the Board of Selectmen may not be, the Board of Selectmen certainly isn't business unfriendly, at least this member, because here's what I would like to try to, for us to do. Year and a half, now a year ago, almost, or maybe just, just, just under a year, whatever it was. We had these visiting sessions where the, where the public came forward, and then they went off to, to the ad hoc committee on 129 Parker Street, and there were a lot of positive things mentioned by the, the members of the planning committee, I mean, the members of the, the ad hoc committee, as well as the public. Things that people can rally around, people, things that people really said, that will work in a development down at 129 Parker Street. What we have failed to do is to move that ball along by, by helping change the zoning so that those things can happen possibly. So, I would like our board to have some discussion about things like assisted care living, that currently is something that everybody seems to think is a good opportunity for that location, but we haven't made any progress in getting it into the zoning. Healthcare-type things that everybody seems to think is a good idea for that location, but we haven't made any movement to move forward. Everybody keeps talking retail, retail, retail. These are things that people at those visiting sessions talked about and positively said, we can support that, but we have, as a community, have taken no steps to move it forward. So, if the, if the planning board isn't taking the action to move those zoning issues forward, perhaps the board should propose them to the, to the planning board as, as evidence of our willingness to, to move forward on issues that we know that the community will support, because we heard it for a year ago in the, in the visiting sessions, as well as through the, through the, the ad hoc committee. So, I think we should put as another agenda, agenda item in the future to discuss what type of, and I don't know the approach, because I don't know how, how we interact with the planning board in proposing particular potential zoning changes, but this is the way to get the ball moving, to show that we are willing, hey, developer, whoever it may be down the road, we're willing to put in additional opportunities within the zoning. Come work with us. We haven't done that. Now's the time.
You're talking about the specific ones mentioned in the ad hoc committee report. I forget, there was like five or six.
Yeah.
Commercial rec and...
Yeah, recreation, assisted living, health...
Yeah, a little medical and a couple others they had.
Yeah, we can look back and see what they were.
There were things in a report Angus wrote when we met with Lone Star, and that's when the town meeting overwhelmingly rejected zoning changes. Then we had all these meetings with Lone Star, the owner, and the library and things, and it was a whole list of things that people said they wanted. And that included a hotel, it included medical facilities such as Baker Avenue, included all these things, most of which aren't in any of the proposals, but as, as Selectman Gavin said, there's also no zoning changes. So, besides the ad hoc committee, there were a whole series of other peoples, people. We asked the voters, since you voted no, what do you want? They told us, and the developer ignored it. And that's why it didn't pass, not because of anything else.
All right, thank you, Ron.
Thank you for having me.
That's it for, that's it for that topic, but I would like to have that as an agenda item in the future. I asked, last meeting, I brought to the attention of the administration the sign over at the Boys and Girls Club that the police department had said, has knocked over. It's still not there. An exit sign, or do not, no exit sign off of the coming out onto 117 from the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that.
The police have said that, especially at events, that it causes some concern over there.
Out on the Great Road. Out on the Great Road.
On the Great Road, on the 117. And then, lastly, we talked earlier about the February budget meeting. I was thinking perhaps we should choose a date now so that we can start letting people know, so... The two new members, just so you are aware, we have a...
It's the second Saturday in February. It's pre-chosen.
Yeah, it's chosen.
Yeah, but we've, we've moved it because of issues with, well, at least let's state what the date is.
Every violation of the charter.
Yeah.
We have moved it because of conflicts with, well, what we did was opened it and closed it, but we, we did move it because of the conflict with school vacation. We had snow one year, but there was school vacation conflicts as well.
It's gonna be Valentine's Day this year.
What is it, the first Saturday?
So, where are you going?
Second Saturday.
Huh? Is it the first Saturday in February or the second?
Second.
So, you guys, make sure you put that on your calendar, the second, it's...
Fourteenth is Valentine's.
Half-day meeting at the library typically on the budget, to the budget presentation.
Yeah, last year...
That is it.
Last year was on the eighth.
Thank you for your indulgence.
All right, well, Jason.
Keep it short. I'd like to thank Elizabeth Milligan for all her hard work. Hopefully, her issues can be resolved and she can rejoin us. And this is one sort of under our DPW hat. I saw that the second, the first tank relining, water tank relining is mostly completed.
Yep.
And I saw that we're already pushing into the second one. Obviously, with DPW input, I'd like to see if it's possible to push that into the next fiscal year, if possible, only to start staggering our large, our large repeated costs, our large capital cost.
Contract's already been awarded, which has a completion, start and completion date. I don't know, the contract is gonna be amendable to doing...
Well, the first, you're talking about the first tank. The first tank is almost complete.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
The steel tank is nearly complete. The concrete tank is just, just coming up, so...
Tell you what, Jason, if you want to make a specific proposal to the board, we'll consider it, but...
Okay.
We can't, we can't act on something like that unilaterally.
Well, I wasn't suggesting I'd like to get DPW's feedback. And then, obviously, the TA, as far as the budgeting goes on that. Like, Bill, I don't know if somebody, either Becky or, or you can forward out the liaison positions to the new members?
The open ones?
Uh, the open, or, or some of the, the ones that the three of us are currently covering, and then...
Yep, that's a good point.
Interim.
Will do.
That's enough for tonight.
While we're on the topic of that, Bill, would you mind giving up CBC?
Uh, sure. Twist my arm. Well, actually, we have to talk about a few things, whether you're still a member or not, but...
Right, I have to tender a letter?
Maybe, maybe not. We haven't figured it out.
You may become the board's representative?
It's a somewhat unique situation, so, but Kevin is pondering it. He'll figure it out. But, yeah, if it turns out that way, yeah, no problem at all. But anyways, so, sure, let's go over to...
Can he be the liaison and a member?
Uh, probably, yeah.
Can he be a member of the board deck?
Yeah, he's gonna be there anyway.
Well, I mean, that was the point of the Board of Selectmen member when the committee was formed.
Correct.
We all sat here and said, I don't have time to be on the committee, but we'll put somebody who's gonna represent us. And so, it would work pretty good if it was you.
Until he became a mem.
But anyways, yeah, Tim, so, new old business. You got anything?
Nope, that's about it. All I have for you.
Didn't come with a platform? All right, fine, Chris?
Nope. I didn't get my list yet.
And there's Chris's list yet, and we have executive session, so, hold on for that. Uh, I got, uh, two things on the correspondence. One, the retirement board letter about somebody got appointed to something or other. Can you remind me of our, our duties with regards to that retirement board? I thought it was not really ours.
I don't remember what the letter was, either.
Uh, Ken, Ken...
Is it the, fiscally, for the budget numbers?
No, it was a point, somebody got appointed to something or other.
Uh...
It's 54 in the...
Not P rec.
Maynard Retirement Board, Ken Demare got...
Ken Demare.
The election officer for the Maynard contributory retirement system's election of the third member of the Maynard Retirement Boards.
Yeah, I don't know what that means. That was from the current chair, right? The letter from the current chair?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know if, I'll indulge Mike to speak on it. He's in, Mike's a member of the retirement board by ex officio status, by way of being the town accountant, so he attends every board meeting. I don't know what that is.
Basically, what the rules are, is that the retirements that expire, and basically, you have to appoint that particular position. He's responsible for, you know, counting the ballots, sending out the letters, and, you know, putting people on the ballot. And so, basically, you know, we just reappointed him, that's all.
So, as a non-voting member, he...
Is it just an informal thing? I mean, we don't have any, we don't actually have any participation, no?
No.
No, I just noticed. The members that make up the retirement system are eligible to serve on the board.
Can we appoint one person?
No.
No?
I'm the only a person.
Okay, you might be our, you're, yeah.
Yeah, I'm the person, right, in case we're appointed.
Yeah.
He's my appointment, ex officio.
I got you. And the other thing was the correspondence regarding the water issue at 51 Acton Street?
Yeah, that's...
Are we gonna hear more about that sometime, or?
Uh, it's getting resolved, actually. It's getting resolved, actually, this week. They're, they're doing the repair, I think that it's, they've been in touch as well. Phone call today as well as.
Probably a town email.
That was me.
With you?
I sent you all the schools.
What are they doing?
Thank you.
I'm good with it being taken care of.
Yeah, it's all set. It'll, it'll be resolved. It's getting addressed before the winter, and it's all set at this point.
Okay. And, that's great. And before we conclude, the flurry of bells and whistles from our phones remind me of one thing. Caution to the new members and, and old, it's like you don't really want to be IMing and emailing during the meetings, because that kind of makes it part of the minutes of the meeting and meeting records, so. If it has anything at all to do with the topic that is on the, on the agenda, your IMs and your emails are attached to our minutes.
So don't be emailing Jason down the other end, so.
Yeah, we're, I don't even email somebody outside, you know. Sure, you can answer your wife and say, I'm late, but you don't want your emails to end up as part of the minutes. It's just a little awkward. All right, so.
Unless they say Bill Crenshaw's wonderful.
Yes, right, and then we'll put him on the front of the minutes. We don't really have any worry about that happening. One last thing to do is we want to go into executive session, so Kevin can update us all on our current litigation efforts on various things. So, the way this works is that we have a formal executive session declaration. And